All right, shall we go ahead and get started? I will go ahead and call the study session to order. And just as a note, we have Commissioner Depor- Depo, excuse me, sitting in this evening, so. All right, with that, first thing on the study session is the water resources. Looking around, not sure. Oh. Right. We'll go ahead.
Oh, I went to the wrong slide. Okay. We'll get here started soon. Is this one working? Oh, it's still on here. Thank you. Well, before we get started, good evening. My name is Lauren Hickson and I'm the interim Water Resources Manager. And this evening, we wanted to come and talk with you about the Tier One water shortage on the Colorado River and give you an update on what's going on there, as well as provide you information about Gilbert's preparedness in light of shortage. So today's presentation, we'll start with just an overview of Gilbert's water supply. Talk about the water conservation plan review process. I'll get adjusted here shortly. And then about, talk specifically about the Tier One shortage and its impacts, as well as Gilbert's response and ongoing preparations. So Gilbert has four main water sources as part of our supply. And that includes Colorado River water, salt and verdi supplies, groundwater and reclaimed water. Colorado River water and salt and verdi supplies together make up about 60% of our supply. 30% about each. And then groundwater that we pump from our wells is 25% of our supply. And reclaimed water, which is the treated wastewater that we use for outdoor landscapes and for recharge, is about 15% of our supply. When it comes to water resource planning, we do a lot of different types of plans to ensure that we have adequate supplies for not only today's existing customers, but also for build-out. And so we do integrated water resource master planning in order to project supplies and project demands for the build-out of the community. We have a 100-year designation of assured water supply, which we renew on a 15-year basis, but that essentially provides assured water supply for the build-out of the community. And then we also have our Water Resources and Conservation Code, which helps us develop wisely for the future in light of our existing and available water supplies. So with that, I'm going to hand it off to Heather Turrentine, who is our Water Resources and Conservation Coordinator, who's going to talk a little bit more about how we plan for water with the planning process.
Hi. So because we know that land and water are both finite resources, we plan very carefully for the productive use of both of them combined together to make sure that our development is sustainable. We have several conservation policies in place to regulate water use, both indoor and outdoor, for all of our water customers. Most recently added was the Sustainable Water Allocation Policy. This targets non-residential indoor water use. What this does is essentially has a conversation with any water user that's going to come into Gilbert and be using more, significantly more water than what our planning and Water Resources Department had planned for build-out. So in this way, it helps us safeguard that we've got enough water for all incoming users. We also have our reclaimed water use policies, which encourage the sustainable use of reclaimed water on large landscapes. For those policies, every user has a reclaimed water use allocation. And in that way, we encourage efficient irrigation because those allocations are based on a site-specific water budget. So we're allocating them just a little bit more than what their plants exactly need. So that creates efficiencies there. And then we've got our landscape water efficiency regulations in the code. And this influences all water users throughout the town of Gilbert. We primarily focus on regulating large common area landscaping and then also do influence private homes through the, through our model home ordinance. So the goal there is to put limits in place on the total high water use amount of landscape out there. And then we also have efficiency guidelines for water features and irrigation systems that are in place. Most recently, we updated a portion of this code to require that all new non-single-family residential developments that are coming in are required to install a smart irrigation controller on their system at the time of development. So this also ensures that that efficient system is, has the ability to be operated in the most efficient manner as well. And so in order to make sure that these policies are upheld in all of the new developments that come through Gilbert, Water Conservation takes a look at all incoming new service requests. So we look at any new design review application that comes in, as well as we get alerts for any meter additions that are of two inches or greater. So Water Conservation will monitor every application that comes in. And at the pre-application stage, we will take a look to see if the user would potentially be a multiple and large meter user. And that means that they're, essentially they're going to be a very significant water user based on their expected water use, based on their meter size. And so through that, the water allocation policy would apply to them. We also flag people who are going to be reclaimed water users as well. And the, what we're doing here is just trying to bring the policies to their attention because sometimes there's some additional processes in place that may take a little bit longer. So we want to work with them from the start so that we don't delay the design review any more than is needed. And then so when we get to the design review, that's when Water Conservation takes a look at those landscape water efficiency guidelines and make sure that each landscape that comes in is in compliance with those limits on high water use landscaping. And then any potential multiple and large meter user would then also have that conversation and go through the water allocation policy review process, if applicable. And any reclaimed water user would then also go through the motions of setting up that reclaimed water use agreement, which sets that efficient allocation for their landscape irrigation. So that's how we make sure that with all of the new developments that are coming in, our code is being applied there. And then for developments that are already established, but may be expanding operations and they may be adding in a meter, perhaps there, it's a brand-new meter itself, or it's an upgrade to a current meter. If it is two inches or greater, then Water Conservation gets an alert and has the opportunity to take a look at what their expected water use would be, again, to make sure that they're going to stay on track with what we have planned in the, you know, Planning and Water Resources Combined Process, to make sure that that is matching up. Otherwise, we then, you know, have that conversation about water to make sure that the water that's being used is being used in the most, you know, economically efficient way possible. And then Water Conservation and Water Resources performs periodic audits. So we will review on an annual basis the water use of our large water users in town. So it's a pretty easy report to run, just to make sure no one has fallen through the cracks and make sure that those users that were identified are in compliance with their policy. And then every 10 years, Water Resources will review the reclaimed water use agreements, just to make sure that those are still at the right allocation, that it makes sense and is efficient. And then continually, the Water Resources Department will review the supply that we've got for the future, as well as the projected demand that is changing over time, to make sure that those are staying within balance. If it was ever projected that those would be going out of balance, then we would start using one of the tools that Lauren will talk to you about later today, which is the Water Supply Reduction Management Plan. So I'll pass it back to her, so she can talk about that water supply and demand balance and how Gilbert is prepared for that.
So we just wanted to walk through the plan review process, just to get a sense of how the water planning then applies to the design review process. So we'll zoom back out to talk more about the Tier One shortage and how that impacts our supply. But so the chart that I have here on the screen shows that distribution of the different supplies that we have that makes up our total water supply portfolio. And to give you perspective, as of today, we use about 70% of the total supply that's available to us. And that's, that's planned. We want to have enough supply for growth and for the future. So when it comes to the Tier One shortage, that is a declaration on the Colorado River. It's part of the drought contingency plan that was approved in 2019, which established different elevations on Lake Mead as to when a shortage would declare, be declared. And that agreement is between specific states, which I'll go to, the lower basin states, which this graphic shows the different basins that make up the Colorado River watershed. And back in 1922, the Upper Basin and Lower Basin were established to allocate supply of the Colorado River to the different states. So the Upper Basin includes Wyoming, Colorado, Utah, and New Mexico. And the Lower Basin states are Arizona, California, and Nevada. And back in 1922 and through the 1900s, the allocations were made for these different basins. And the total allocation was 16 and a half million acre feet total for the entire basin. And over the last 30 years, we've been seeing that the actual flow of the Colorado is a lot less than that. It's about 13 million acre feet. And so that's part of the reason that the shortages are occurring, is that over-allocation of supply. And so just to give you some context, one acre foot is about enough to serve two homes for one year. So just to give you some context for what an acre foot is. So how we get this water is through the Central Arizona Project. And the CAP is a 336-mile-long aqueduct that comes from Lake Havasu all the way down to Tucson. And so we rely on this very important piece of infrastructure to deliver the supply to the town of Gilbert. And specifically, our water is delivered by the CAP. And we have several different contracts and agreements for various volumes and priorities of CAP water. The graphic on the right shows the different, it's called the Priority Block Chart for CAP, with the lower priority types of water at the top of the chart and the highest priority of water supplies at the bottom of the chart. And this is the breakdown of Gilbert's contracts and agreements by priority. So you can see the majority of our supply are at the higher priority end. So again, this volume makes up about a third of our supply and it's treated at the Santan Vista Water Treatment Plant. So then, back to how the shortage impacts that. That same block chart shown here for the 2022 Tier One shortage, CAP will take a cut of 512,000 acre feet. And that starts to dip into that yellow band of priority pool, which is called NIA, which I won't get into the details of what that exactly means. But essentially, that portion of our supply will be cut by 60%. But let's get back to the overall supply. That cut in that one strip on the previous chart is a 2% reduction to our total supply. So that's what a Tier One shortage looks like in volume. However, I will note that the drought contingency plan included mitigation of supplies for 2022, which actually means we take a 0% cut for 2022 in a Tier One shortage. In future shortage years, there's not mitigation included. And if the shortage is deeper, then it will impact our supplies greater. However, again, we have a buffer, not only of our, between our supply and demand for growth, but also to help buffer from shortage. So with that, I will talk about our current market, well, messaging, I should say, when it comes to Tier One shortage. And really, there's three main takeaways. There's no immediate impact to our ability to meet demand. We've been preparing for this shortage for decades and will continue to do so. And really, we want a message that using water wisely increases our resiliency. You know, the more we do now to reduce our demand and use water wisely, the less these shortages will impact us in the future. So one of our tools that we have as a town to help manage supply reductions and future shortages is our Water Supply Reduction Management Plan. This was recently updated this year and adopted in August, really to provide flexibility in light of shortage declarations, but also part of our normal review process of this plan. And the purpose of this plan is that it really provides us a clear path forward as shortages become deeper. And so this is a required plan per legislature. It's for every city and municipality and water provider. And so we originally adopted it in 2003 and updated it this year. And really, the main takeaway is that it protects health, safety, and the economy. That's the main purpose of the plan, so that we can minimize disruptions to our customers and to external jobs throughout the town. So our plan changes that we went through this year were active, changing the stage activation triggers and then also updating some of the demand management strategies. So the stage activation is really what conditions are in place that require us to implement the plan. And the demand management are the different strategies that we would implement in order to help reduce demand. So the plan has four different stages. And each stage name has, reflects the intent of the stage. So Stage One and Stage Two, those are really based on protecting our renewable supplies. So of our water supply, the surface water supplies and the reclaimed water are what are called renewable supplies. And so as those become cut and we have to rely on groundwater, we would implement these stages of our plan. And those stages are really meant to be voluntary. Everything we ask of the community is voluntary in those two stages. The town will start taking measures internally to help reduce demand from our own facilities, from parks, et cetera. And we would implement those actions before we ask them of the community. And then Stage Three and Stage Four, those are when, the stage activation triggers for those stages is when our supply and our demand, our total supply, including groundwater, including every resource we have, starts to get too close to our demand. So we really need actual required reductions from the community. So that's the structure of the plan, that the initial stages wanted to really, the responses match the mildness of the situation. And then Stage Three and Four really respond to the severity of the situation. So that's really just kind of an overview of our plan. There's more details. The plan is online and available if you have more questions about that. But again, it's mostly structured to reduce demand for outdoor landscapes, because that's a huge component of our supply, or part of our demand. So, let's see. So let me grab a drink of water here. We all need water. Yes, shameless plug for water. We all need it. So just some other plan components. The town manager can activate Stage One. Council has to activate the latter stages. But the town manager can end or reduce any of the other stages. But all stages, we plan to have proactive stakeholder engagement to make sure that the community is aware of what, what measures we want to take to help reduce demand. So just to summarize, there's no immediate impact with the Tier One shortage. We're always looking for ways to insulate and diversify our portfolio. This plan update provides flexibility in preparation for shortage and certainty to our customers in times of shortage. And then just zooming out beyond our plan, we do a lot of different things in the water resources world to prepare for the future. You know, this is just part of our day-in-and-day-out operations. We're securing supplies for growth. We have a diverse water portfolio, so if one of our supplies is cut, we have other supplies to back up that supply. We have a strong water conservation department with lots of different resources for the community to help use water as efficiently as possible. The town has adopted the water allocation policy, really to align our growth with, with the water supply that we have available. We invest in our infrastructure so that we have redundant and resilient supply. So we have the wells to, to bring the groundwater when it's needed and the treatment plants to treat the surface water that's available to us. We have recharged for many years, in years that we've had additional supply that's available to recharge, which really bolsters our long-term savings account. So that helps us mitigate shortage impacts. And then we recycle 100% of our wastewater, so that we're reusing every drop that we have. And it delays the need to go out and get new sources. And then again, we just have strategic partnerships throughout the valley in order to provide that resiliency to, to the town. So with that, I will open it up for any questions.
All right, thank you, Lauren. Anybody have questions for Lauren or Heather?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, we talked a little bit about where the water comes from. I'm curious to know a little bit more about how Gilbert uses its water between residential use, commercial use, agriculture. Where, where's the majority of our water being used?
Majority is residential demand. That's about 75%. About 75% of our supply goes to residential demand. And I think it's about 20, well then, yeah, 25% is non-residential, right? So commercial HOAs, et cetera.
All right, anybody else have questions for Lauren or Heather? Yeah, Commissioner Bianchi.
Sure.
Thank you both for the presentation. So if I understand you correctly, the Tier One shortage, the reductions do not affect any of our 100-year assurances. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then just out of curiosity, do we rely on the tribes or their allotment for any share of our percentages?
We have leases with some of the tribes as part of our CAP entitlement. So you saw the breakdown. I don't know why it's giving me feedback. Is that better? Anyways, so you saw the breakdown of where I circled different types of priority. So we have some in that Indian priority, and that's from the leases that we lease from the tribes. Yeah.
All right, anybody else? Yeah, Commissioner Fay.
Thank you for the presentation. This is actually one question, but it's going to sound like two. How does this impact us on, other than the 100-year assured supply? How does any of this impact us on the Planning Commission? Alternatively, what is it you need from us as, as commission members?
That is a great question. Do you have any thoughts?
So I guess my thoughts would be, you know, support sustainable development policies that come through in Gilbert. Policies that look at the balance of our water use consumption and, and those economic benefits and returns that are associated with that. And I think that would be one of the, the big helps there, as well as, you know, think, just always thinking about water when we look at, you know, potential rezones and, and different development that's going in. We always just want to balance, you know, efficient water use and make sure that the, the developments that are coming in are, you know, beneficial for Gilbert and enhancing the overall value.
Okay, so to that end, back east drainage is a giant process of flushing, getting the water off the property. In Arizona, it's a giant process of keeping it from getting off the property. And that's in the Land Development Code. We here don't literally control that. We kind of look at it. But is that the wrong policy? Should we be trying to get it off the property because you guys could keep it and use it?
Stormwater management, that, you know, that doesn't fall under our department. But a lot of that, here in Maricopa County, there's a lot of use of drywells.
Fair enough, but I'm asking, should it? That's the question.
No, I think, I think the current methodology is perfectly fine and a good way of managing it. I know there are certain areas where there may be the capability of retaining stormwater to kind of allow it to infiltrate into the aquifer, and I think those practices are good. I don't know how that really pertains to the town, as we don't have that kind of issue that I'm aware of. But maybe I'm wrong, so.
All right, any other questions? All right, I'll see.
Yeah.
Thanks, Lauren. Thank you, Heather.
I'll ju, I'll just say thank you to Lauren and Heather. Very good presentation.
Thank you very much. All right, with that, Ashley, you're up. And fully comprehensive presentation in 30 minutes with all of our questions to boot, so. All right, Heritage North. Excited to hear about this one.
All right, thank you, chairman and commission members. Excited to talk about this project tonight, too. This is Heritage North. It's also being called Heritage Park. So if you, if you see that, it is the same project. Specifically tonight, we're talking about Z2002, UP2006, and UP2008. This project is located at the southwest corner of Juniper Avenue and Gilbert Road. It's located at the very north end of our Heritage District. You may, you may know it with the Burger King there on that very hard corner and then that vacant parking lot there to the south. So just a little bit of background, and I didn't update the acreage on this, I apologize. The, the site is just a little less than 12 acres. We've, we've got some new acreage. So I will include an update to that in my, in my next presentation. And you, you may have heard from the beginning of this, we used to refer to it as the 9.1 acre site. The applicant through their process was able to acquire that Burger King site and incorporate it into their project boundary. So that is, is pretty significant for this project, having them be able to develop and incorporate that hard corner of the site to really create an inviting gateway into the district. In May of 2019, we entered into a development and disposition agreement with the applicant. Aside from the Burger King site, this is a town-owned property that they are looking to develop and ultimately purchase from us. Then in May of 2020, the applicant submitted their initial applications to the town. It included a total of five applications. The first being the rezone that we're going to talk about tonight. Three use permits, one for ground floor residential in the Heritage Village Center zoning district, one for a hotel in HVC, an administrative use permit for us to consider a reduction in the parking requirement, as well as the design review application. So in terms of the process, the rezoning application will follow its typical process. It'll go to the Redevelopment Commission, Planning Commission, and Town Council. The use permits will go to Redevelopment Commission and Planning Commission. And then the Design Review, Planning Commission is used to seeing those. Since this is in the Heritage District, it'll just go to the Redevelopment Commission. I have provided some of those exhibits just for reference in your packet. But just to, to prepare you, you won't actually see that full design review package. And then the administrative use permit for parking is something that staff is evaluating and is responsible for approving or not that application. So you won't see that either before you for a decision, but we will talk about it a little bit tonight. So in terms of input that I'm requesting from the Planning Commission tonight, the PAD or the rezoning includes proposed modifications to the building heights for a number of the buildings. I'd like some input on the overall development plan and the ground floor residential specifically. So as we move through the site, there are nine total buildings on the site. There are the Commons Open Space at the center of the site. The Paseo runs from the, the very south end of the Heritage District at Elliott Road, connecting up to Juniper. So these are some public improvements that are occurring on this property that I think they're just important to talk about. And then they're also providing some improvements to the Western Power Line Trail that will benefit the, the district at large. So jumping into the PAD, the rezoning request, the Heritage Village Center zoning allows for a maximum of four stories and 55 feet in height. In addition, it has minimum height requirements, 35 feet and two stories. And so for essentially all of the buildings, except for Building Three, they, they are looking to deviate from those standards. You'll notice this table differs a little bit from what was in your staff report. We've been working with the applicant to kind of drill down and become a little bit more specific in their request so that, that where they need the increased height, we're not asking for more than, for more than needed. So I'll go through- So I'll go through the buildings individually and talk about those heights. But I thought it important to point out that in their, in their most recent submittal for building one, for example, they've limited the, the tallest portion of the building to include only 5% of, of the building. So they're not looking for that 7 to 8 feet for the entire thing. So I think that's important to point out. And then another deviation that they're requesting is for building transparency. The Heritage Village Center zoning district requires that along the principal building frontage, there's 75% transparency, just to activate street frontages, activate those, the front of those buildings, create that real lively urban environment. So along the multifamily portion, they are looking to reduce that to 50%. The hotel also looking to reduce that from 75 feet, 75% to 50%. And then building nine, they're looking to reduce that. The rest of them, along their principal building frontages, they are proposing that 75 feet. So wanted to point that out as well. So as we talk a little bit about the proposed building heights, Heritage Village Center, again, allows for 55 feet and four stories. But I thought it important to talk a little bit about the context of the heritage district, provide some examples of what that height looks like because there are a couple of buildings in the district that reach similar heights. So the Vaughn Parking Garage, probably being the closest, is the image there on the far right. Up to the top of that clock tower is 78 feet. So if you're familiar with that building, hopefully that'll help provide a little bit of context. And then in addition, the university building was built at 68 feet and then collab at 64. So if you can picture those buildings, they, they reach near the height that's being proposed as part of this project. So the multifamily is located at the northwest corner of the project site. It includes a total of 288 units. 250 are required per the development agreement. And then they've, they're proposing a total of five stories. I will note the development agreement did allow them to make a request to go up to the five stories for this, for this project. So is, this is consistent with what we were expecting to see. For the main portion of the multifamily building, they are meeting that minimum height requirement. They're at 54 feet, eight inches. And then where they start to request an increase in the height is at the amenity area. One thing that I, I should point out is the original layout of the site had multifamily all the way over to Gilbert Road. So it, it reached that hard corner. And staff worked with the applicant to reorient the site and to shift the hotel to that hard corner to, to really change the entry into the heritage district. We had some concerns with the multifamily on that corner. And so in, in shifting the multifamily back, they had to reconfigure some of the site. And so what they are proposing is to move the amenity building to the roof. And so they've got their amenities at the top. So to the finished floor of the roof deck is 63 feet. And then there's an amenity building on top that's 78 feet. And that's this area that I just highlighted here in red. So it's a small portion of it. As I mentioned, the PAD would limit where that maximum height could be. Again, planning commission is not looking at the design review, but I thought it, I thought it important as you considered the request for you to understand what that looked like. So the applicant's provided a number of renderings. This is looking interior to the, interior from the site. So the Commons Open Spaces to the right of this image. And you can see at the, at the right center is those amenity buildings. The applicant's also provided a line of sight diagram that shows the farther away you are from the building, the more likely you are to see those amenities. So if you're, if you're within the site, you're probably not going to see them. If you're at the corner of Juniper and Gilbert Road, you may barely see the top of those amenity buildings because of the way they've located them at the center of the building. This is looking from Juniper and Ash. You can't see that increased height. Moving on to the hotel building, the hotel is building number two. It's located at the hard corner of the site. It's 80,000 square feet. The development agreement did require at least 75,000 square feet or 150 rooms. So they're meeting that requirement. Again, this building is proposed at five stories, which is, the request was permitted per the development agreement. It does meet the height requirement at the top of the fourth floor. But again, with this building, they are proposing an amenity area on the roof. So it's 60 feet to the top of the amenity roof and then 71 feet to the top of the mechanical screening. So I'll show you what that looks like. And in the design review, I think they've done a good job of, of stepping it back so that as you enter the heritage district, it does meet that minimum height requirement. And it, it stepped back, so you're not, you're not feeling this, this really tall building right there on the hard corner. And then again, if you look at the top, I pinch that is the view from Gilbert Road, looking at it. So it has this tiered effect to the increased height. With mixed use building number three, this building is meeting the requirements, but I thought it important to, to show you it just as part of the development plan. This is a two-story building, office on the top floor, retailer, commercial mix on the bottom. And one of the things that I had mentioned with, with this site is the applicant is completing a portion of the Paseo that connects the south end of the heritage district all the way up to Juniper. And, and they've proposed that the Paseo go through this building. I, I didn't include it in my presentation, but I've got some slides at the very end if, if we have time and if you'd like to see the Paseo. But I won't specifically go over it unless you tell me to. And then this is that building again from Gilbert Road and then from the west. Retail building number four is in proximity to the south parking garage. This one again would request a deviation from the minimum height requirement. It's a one-story building, 26 feet tall. It's a small incubator space for businesses. So it, it provide, it meets a need that really isn't met in the heritage district by providing a small tenant spaces. Again, right up against that parking garage. Retail buildings five is another one that would request a deviation from the minimum height requirement. It's one story tall, 25 feet. And this building includes a public restroom, which was part of the development agreement. These being interior to the site, I think staff isn't too concerned about the deviation request. Same thing with building number six, one story, 30 feet. And this is a, a commercial mix building. Office building number seven is our southernmost building. It is 148,000 square feet of office. 100,000 square feet is required per the development agreement, so they are in excess of, of their minimum requirement. And then they're proposing 14,000 square feet of retailer, commercial mix on the ground floor. This building again is requesting some deviations to increase the maximum height up to 79 feet to the top of the mechanical screening. One of the things about this building is there is some tiered design to it. And it's proposing 14-foot plate heights between those floors. And so that's, that's why it's such a tall building. Here is, this is the most recent version. The applicant made this submittal just on Monday. So this is a little bit different than what you saw in your packet if you look through those elevations. On the top image to the left, that's Gilbert Road. If you, if you looked through your packet, you probably saw this version of the plan that had a two-story frontage along Gilbert Road and then it stepped up to the total of four stories. And so I, I did want to point out that difference, see if planning commission had any concern about that increased height along the Gilbert Road frontage. Just because previous versions showed it as two stories and then it stepped back to that increased height. So welcome your feedback on, on the increased height right along Gilbert Road. This was the last version and the version that's in your packet. And then some renderings of that building. And then we will talk about the parking garage. The parking garage is building number eight. It's a total of 696 spaces and five stories. The development agreement does specify that it has to be a minimum of five stories. Here they are just requesting a slight deviation to the height of 57 feet to the top of the elevator tower. This structure does have a tiered design so that along Ash Street, it is only 34 feet and four levels. And then it, it steps up to that higher site, more interior to the site. And so here's an image of it looking from Ash Street. You can see the part that's shaded back is where it steps up to that greater height. And then here's a, a image of it from either end. One thing I'll point out with this is the way they've oriented those elevator towers is interior to the site. So I think that that, that helps with the height increases as well. It's not along Ash Street or... And then kiosk, the kiosk, which is building number nine, is right at the center of the site. It's within the Commons Open Space area that they're developing. This one again would request a deviation for the, the minimum height because it's proposed at one story and 22 feet. One of the other applications that I alluded to that the applicant has submitted is a use permit to consider ground floor residential. Use permit is required for, for that in the heritage district. We've had a number of conversations internally and with the applicant about the viability of commercial along Ash and Juniper and do feel, staff does feel that multifamily makes sense in those locations. Interior to the site, staff was concerned about creating a vibrant pedestrian environment. And so we've worked with the applicant and we're happy to, to see that they've made some modifications to their proposal. So this is a little different from the version in your packet as well. They have relocated the fitness area and some of the resident amenities to this ground floor elevation. And this is the portion of the building that you would see from Gilbert Road if you were looking down the private drive or Laurel that's shown on the site plan. And so that was one of the things that was important to us was making sure that, that it was interior to the site. It was still a vibrant pedestrian environment. And so we're happy to see this change and I wanted to make sure that I pointed that out to the planning commission. Some outstanding items that I just thought I would touch on because they, they do have the potential to impact the, the site when you see this next. I mentioned the administrative use permit. What the applicant is seeking with that application is to reduce our parking requirement based on shared use. So our code allows us to consider alternative, or it, it allows us to take into account shared trips. So say the office users are there at a time different from some of the commercial uses or people that are visiting one site are also going to be visiting another at the same time. And so they've, they've submitted a request for that. The LDC requires 14, a little over 1,400 spaces. They're proposing 1,238, which is a reduction of about 12%. And based on the study that was just resubmitted a few days ago, the shared part, the shared parking reduction proposed 1,244 spaces. So it looks like they're still about six shy. We haven't had a chance to evaluate the most recent study, but we will continue to have conversations about the need to come closer to the required number of parking spaces. The other item that may change the site just slightly is there is an existing bike lane, bike lane along Juniper Road that does not connect all the way to Gilbert. Current, the current configuration constrains that area a little bit. And so we're, we're continuing to look for, look at options to be able to continue that bike lane through to Gilbert Road. So wanted to point those items out because they do have the potential, as I mentioned, to impact the site when this comes back to you for hearing. The applicant has held two neighborhood meetings on the site, the first one in 2019 and then the second one just a couple of weeks ago. Discussion primarily focused on parking overflow into the neighborhood. So again, one of the big reasons staff is looking very closely at the administrative use permit that's been proposed. There was questions about scooter and skateboard usage on site, security after hours, and then, and then concerns about traffic in this area. So that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions that you have. And again, looking for feedback on the deviation requests as part of the PAD. Any thoughts you have on the overall development plan? And then if, if you have any thoughts on the ground floor residential, happy to hear those as well.
All right. Thank you, Ashley. So we have questions for Ashley. Who wants to get it going? Commissioner Munt.
Thank you, Ashley. First question, why are they reducing, why are they making the building shorter? It would seem kind of antithetical to what developers do. And like, why would you want to have a single story when it would be required to have a couple and have more tenants?
I, I think, Commissioner Munt, I think that there's a couple of, of things at play. One, just in, in terms of design, I think kind of the variety of building heights is, you know, something that they're, that they're looking for just in creating this environment so that it doesn't feel like this really big, you know, everything's really big and not to a pedestrian scale. And then two, the second, the second, probably maybe even bigger piece of it is overbuilding a site and then not being able to adequately, adequately serve traffic and meet parking demand. We're already talking about reducing parking and concerns related to that. So I, I think it's, it's a couple of things.
Thank you. And then I guess the, the second one, which I'd imagine has been discussed is with the height restrictions that are through the heritage district. And I know we had a recent somewhat contentious one regarding one right down there. And I just wanted to understand from the staff's perspective, does this fall outside of the jurisdiction of where that last one was?
There has been some discussion about that, Commissioner Munt. And just that it, it's kind of the bookend of the heritage district. It's not central. It's not as close to the water tower. You know, we're always concerned about preserving those, the view corridor to the water tower. And so we have had those conversations and, you know, certainly from a staff perspective, we're, we're open to feedback on that and, and, you know, would like to hear commissions input as well.
Yeah. And, and I guess for me with the, the viewpoint, I know we talked about how, you had spoken to how when you step back, then it somewhat restricts that height. But how does that view, does it impede where you can see the water tower coming south on Gilbert Road?
The applicant had, maybe it wasn't the applicant, but we, we did have a view corridor study done that had shown an earlier version of the site, didn't impact the views of the water tower. But it, it, that version had building seven was set back farther from Gilbert Road. And so I, I don't know that we have an answer to that today. Previous iteration, it, it wasn't impacted, but we haven't redone it with the new configuration.
Understood. Okay. Thank you, Ash.
Anybody else? Commissioner Bianchi.
So Ashley, with this being a town-owned parcel and with the development agreement, was there a RFP or proposal process that this went through to kind of come to this proposal that we've seen?
Chairman and Commissioner Munt, there, or Commissioner Bianchi, there, there was an RFP process and there, there have been some modifications to the plan proposed through that development agreement. And so part of the staff review and staff analysis is making sure that it still meets the language of the development agreement and still substantially conforms to the exhibits as part of the development agreement. And, and so we feel like we've worked through a lot of those items and continue to, to work through the, the few remaining pieces of it.
Okay. And then we had talked about the parking reduction with the hotels. Is the hotel parking, is that envisioned as part of the garage? Or where would that be for that use?
That's a great question, Commissioner Bianchi. And I, I didn't touch on it and I apologize. So there are two parking garages on site. There's a residential parking garage. The residential actually surrounds that parking garage. Maybe I'll go to my next. So here you can see in the residential portion, there is a garage. And then there's the south garage. The residential is fully parked within that residential garage. And there's, I believe, off the top of my head, I think there's 50 overflow hotel parking spaces within that garage. And then the rest would park in the south garage. We are still working with the applicant to understand how that south garage will operate if valet is an option, if it's a paid garage, if certain floors are reserved for the office. And so those are ongoing conversations that we're having.
Okay. And then with the HVC zoning, does that require that all ground floor be commercial or employment? Or?
It, yeah.
Is there leniency in that?
HVC with, it allows alternate uses, so it allows residential on the ground floor with the use permit.
Okay. And then my last one, I promise, is, is this proposed to be developed in phases? And which one have they said which, how many phases or which one they think might go first?
Chairman and Commissioner, that's a great question and I apologize I did not touch on it. This is a single phase.
Single phase? Okay, wow. So I think as far as my comments go, I'm really pleased because it's a comprehensive proposal on a parcel and it's not getting, you know, divided or parsed up. I think the vertical development, I think, we usually tend to see it at a center of a district. And this is kind of on the outwards. It's a little different, but I think I'm okay with this. And this is kind of on the outwards. It's a little different, but I think I'm okay with this. I understand the transparency requirement that they're being requested. Again, I'm okay with the height, the height requests. And based on the ground floor residential, I think if it's just a portion and there's other retail on site, I'm okay with that request as well.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Anderson.
Uh, thank you for the presentation, Ashley. Has Traffic looked at this? Or if I'm looking at the site plan, the way everything's kind of maneuvering around the site. Looks like you have two entrances, Hemlock Lane and Laurel Lane that's attached to Gilbert. And with a median there, those would be right in, right out only. Is that correct?
Chairman, the south entrance Hemlock is a full motion access. The applicant is working with the property owner on the east side of Gilbert Road to relocate their access point so that they would align. If they're unable to do so, it would be right in, right out and the median would be extended.
Okay, so a lot of people would probably go on to Ash up the Juniper to get to the light there to get full access.
And to your initial question, yes, Traffic has reviewed their traffic impact analysis. Not the latest version. Again, it was just submitted on Monday, so still working through some of those comments.
And what's their, do they have any concern with the way the site is laid out right now? Because we're we're introducing a lot of cars into this area now. And it's, you know, you drive through there on a Friday, Thursday, even Saturday nights with amount of cars that are in that area now. It's very congested on that road. And with a development like this, it's going to make it even more congested. So there's kind of concern there to make sure that it's for traffic flow that it's adequately designed to get people in and out of here. And thank you for clearing up the parking for the multifamily because I was a little curious as to how that all that was working. I am still concerned and I I remember the, when this came up before us, what was it, like a year or two ago, when you first presented it to us? There was a big concern on the parking. And as right now, I I don't think I would support a deviation to decrease it that much. Again, I'm very familiar with that area and on the east side of Gilbert Road with a single-family residential. On Friday and Saturday nights, there's just, those streets are just packed with cars parked on the side of the road. And what's what's the building height for building three again?
Building three is thirty-seven feet to the top of the parapet.
Okay, so building seven is a tall guy. That's five stories?
Yes.
And then we go five and six and three are all one story?
Yes, buildings three, four, five and six are all one story and nine.
Okay, and then we bump up to another five-story building two, the hotel?
Correct.
Okay. Just seems kind of weird how you have the movement. You got tall, shoot down to a couple of one stories and you shoot back up to tall again. I understand the the reason why they're doing the retails as the one story because you really can't do, you know, multi-level for for retail. Expect it to lease out. And I remember the other case that Vice Chair was, I think it was Vice, you brought it up, right? The one that we talked about further down the road. And and I didn't support the height deviation on that one mainly because it was an infill. It was such a narrow lot and we were trying to introduce a sixty-foot tall building and that, and it didn't work. The one that was right in between Norwood Furniture. But I think, you know, I think the multifamily, the garage, those heights make sense because they're tucked back away from Gilbert. There's a little concern with the height heights on Gilbert Road to go up that high. But, uh, you know, all in all, I mean, I'm excited for the project. I think it's going to be really cool. But there's there's some issues with the site I think that really need to get thought out in terms of circ, vehicular circulation and parking. But other than that, I think it's great. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Ashley. So one question, a couple of questions I had. One, on the parking, does the multifamily self-park that's separate from this parking structure? Is that correct, Ashley?
Yeah, it is correct.
Okay, so the parking structure itself would be for the office, the retail hotel, hotel as well would park there?
That's correct. There's a a portion of the hotel parking would go in the residential garage. There is, there is a little bit of excess from the minimum requirement. And then the rest, there is some surface parking as well. I think about forty some odd spaces and then everything else would be in that garage.
Okay. Yeah, so I mean, I agree with Commissioner Anderson. I think, you know, generally speaking, this is a tough area for parking as it is. So I would have some concerns about approving something with less parking here. You know, overall, I I'm excited about this development. I think it's really an important development for the town. I like kind of the variety of the project with the different building heights and different uses. I think it's been really well thought out. It ties in nicely to what's going on in the Heritage District. I like the move of the multifamily, which I think originally I had seen against Gilbert, now being pulled back. I think that makes a lot of sense. You know, my my biggest concerns here would just be on the building heights. I think this is, in my opinion, too big of a project for the site. It kind of, you know, we're we're being challenged on these building heights. And I think there's a reason why we have this Heritage District fifty-five foot limit. And I, you know, I I really will, you know, want to defend that. Because I think it does help to preserve the character of the town. And these developments that come in start to change that character. So overall, I think it's a great project. I'm excited about it. It's too big, I, in my opinion. I also didn't like the change, putting more building height against Gilbert Road with that office building. I think that also was a kind of a a negative change here. But as far as you're concerned about on the visibility, the transparency, I think because of the multifamily use, that makes sense. And I think also, you know, ground floor residential, given where it's at on this site, would be fine. Thank you.
Right. Commissioner Fay.
Thank you very much for actually very thorough, given, I guess, given the size of it. If I understand correctly, ground floor residential is only in the far northwest corner?
Commissioner Fay, that's correct.
And and I don't think, on on all of Ash, I don't think ground floor commercial could make it that that far out. It's it's, I I I was kind of weighing, but I I think if that's the case, it's fine. I'm concerned about vehicle, particularly interior to the property and turn in and off of Gilbert Road. I'm concerned about parking. I guess I share Commissioner Anderson's concern about deviating downwards. I already think, I I know personally and I know friends who have made decisions whether or not to do things in downtown Gilbert based on what parking is like. So it's it's already starting to hit the, it's already getting crowded enough that it starts to factor into the decision to come or not come. And and I think that this will only add to it and maybe add to it a lot. Ground floor residential, the only piece of this whole thing that I I actually think it's it's a pretty decent project. I'm pretty overall kind of in favor of it. The only piece that I have concern about is the building in the far southeast corner, the one against Gilbert and the and the Western Canal. Well, other than one other thing. It's just very abrupt. It's big and it's monolithic and it's right up against the actual Heritage District. And it's abrupt also in the way it handles the Paseo. It, really, the Paseo could pretty easily run right through the middle of this project, but it pretty abruptly diverts it to an alignment that's pretty darn close to the sidewalk on Gilbert Road. I assume that that's bluntly manipulative to put it in the middle of, make it, make the commercial in the middle of the property more marketable. But it it doesn't do the Paseo any favors. I'm not sure it matters that much because the Paseo dead ends just a little bit up there on Juniper, doesn't it? There isn't any plan to go anywhere past Juniper as I understand it, so. Oh, and then for people who use the Western Canal Recreation Facility, joggers and bikers and stuff, this is kind of their their one kind of segue. And I think we're we're progressively cutting off all of the parking places that people can can go to use it. So I don't know if there's plans for some alternate, here's a convenient place or anything. But I don't know, turf that over to your parks department and ask them what they're what they're thinking. I- i- in general, I I think it's kind of a good segue from traditional residential Gilbert to the Heritage District. It's it's the hotel on the north end. It's it's a little abrupt, but not that big a deal. And that hits all of my issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Fay, it wasn't a question, but since I have the slides, I might show you the Paseo just to, just to kind of talk to your point about the Paseo and its realignment. Let me, so this is the Paseo. That's okay.
We'll listen to your calls.
I would like to hear it though.
I'd like to hear it.
I will talk about the Paseo then. So as I've mentioned a couple of times in the presentation, it's the north-south multi-use path through the district, all the way from Elliott up to Juniper. And it's planned to enter the site at its current proposed alignment. So we've got a master plan that shows it coming from Heritage Marketplace to the south. And then from there, we have it traverse eastward along the Western Power Line Trail. And then it enters the site actually through building seven at the south end. Then it goes through buildings five and six, through the Commons open space, through building three, and then in between the multifamily and the hotel. They are proposing wayfinding and signage along that art to to kind of draw people to know that they're following the right path. Amanda Elliott with our Heritage District always characterized it as, you know, you you follow the Yellow Brick Road. So you know you're on the right path and that that kind of image has always stuck with me. And so having having this path that kind of matches what we're planning to the south is important. They are proposing a number of things that are required per the development agreement along that path. Trash receptacles, benches, lighting, those types of things. My only comment on their Paseo development was between the multifamily and the hotel, there really isn't any seating or any of those amenities. But otherwise, they they largely are are providing some some good spaces for for pedestrians. But I'll just walk you through it real quick. So this is along building seven at the south end of the site. So the Western Power Line Trail is to the right of the screen, building seven to the west. So you would follow that trail towards Gilbert Road. You can barely see, there's a Paseo sign on the back of the building above one of those canopies that would kind of lead you that direction. And then you pass through, as I mentioned, building seven. They've proposed storefront windows interior to that to kind of activate the space to make it feel friendly and inviting. So it isn't just this tunnel effect. And then, as I mentioned, it goes through the common open space, which has, there's a splash pad, the kiosk, there's some shade canopies. And then that space that that is open on the right side of the screen, that could be programmed if there's events and things like that. So it it kind of travels through there, which made a lot of sense to us from a staff perspective because it it led people to a to a place that, you know, activity would occur. Then it goes through building three, again, really cool treatment here with the lights, the storefront window. So again, it doesn't feel like a tunnel passing through a building. There's about just under fourteen feet of clearance from a height perspective. And then it travels between the hotel and the multifamily to connect up to Juniper. So, you know, I I think that although it doesn't follow its original alignment as it kind of goes through the site, it it really kind of captures those those important places, I think, through the site to draw people to.
Thank you. Commissioner DePoe, do you have anything? No?
All right, Ashley, thank you. I I
Excuse me, Chair. I, before, I just have two more questions. I'm sorry to cut you off then.
Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Ashley, so as you know, that's an active dirt parking lot right now. Is there a plan in place or going to be in place to? So you said that this place is going to be built as one phase. So again, Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights, there's a lot of parking going on that, on this dirt lot right now. And with the farmers market going on, on the weekends, this place is packed as well because is there, is there going to be a plan in place for these people to park somewhere else in that area while this is getting constructed?
I I will follow up on that question for you. I don't have an answer.
Okay, thank you. And the last question I have is, I'm looking at all the surface market and it's all parallel. Is there any plans for ride share stops here? Because I see a lot of those been popping up around downtown area as well.
Chairman and Commissioner, there are, there are, I think, two that I can think of within the site.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
No problem. All right, anybody else? Okay, Ashley, thank you very much. I I actually would agree. I actually love the overall concept of this. The the building number seven, I think, I feel like there could be something done there that doesn't make it feel so sheer. Just really cavernous, I guess, and straight up. The the parking, I've got it written down several different times. I agree with Commissioner Anderson and a few others on the on the panel here that that there is a lot of angst with parking right now in that area. And to give up parking, I think I would have a lot of problem going down that road. I also feel like, and just not really understanding the flow of how the hotel is going to deal with the parking. Because the sale runs through there, so there's no drive-up, my understanding, would be. Or is there going to be drive-up check-in at the hotel?
That is, can't really see it on here, but that is one of the locations where there's a drop area. I wish I, I wish you could see it a little bit better on the plans, but there is an area for that.
Okay, because my understanding was the Paseo was for foot traffic only and not for driving. So the way I see this is it is it appears that there would not be a pickup drop-off area or a check-in parking area for the hotel. It might be inside the apartment complex. I just kind of making some assumptions there.
Yeah, I'm I'm trying to see. I can't read it on this plan. I apologize. But so Laurel that goes into the site just south of the hotel is a vehicular path. And then the Paseo, the Paseo does cross it.
Okay. I mean, it looks like in the front of the hotel that that they've got some type of feature amenity, whether it's a water fountain or what what have you there, conceptually. And obviously, this is a concept drawing, but just when I look at it, I think, okay, if I was going to stay at a hotel other than Vegas, walking through a casino, how far do I want to walk to check in? And that may be a deterrent, I guess, is is the thought. Other than that, I think the overall site plan is fine. I'm, I really don't have much issue with the height other than building seven. I feel like with the way that it sits right up against Gilbert Road and against the the canal, I feel like that's pretty ominous there. So maybe some way to step that back and make it feel like it's not just so intrusive. That's all I've got. You have all the answers, questions?
I do. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, with that, we need to discuss our regular meeting agenda. Currently, on the agenda, we've got item seven, which is on the consent. We have items eight and nine. Avantara and Keith, was there a reason to leave those on the non-consent? Or can we move those? Did Keith leave? I don't see him. Oh, he's right there. Okay. You have questions on those? Okay, so well, eight, nine, they're the same, so yeah. Okay, okay. So we'll leave those on non-consent then. Move eight up? Okay, we'll move eight up to consent unless anybody else has questions on it? All right, move eight up to consent. And then number ten, I believe we need to leave on the non-consent. All right, so with that, I just need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the moving item number eight, FM twenty-one oh one, Avantara separation fence up to the consent.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Actually, Chair, I think that happens during the public, the regulate hearing. It doesn't happen. We don't vote on it just yet.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah, we just discussed the agenda.
Thank you for correcting me. All right. So with that
My motion dies.
Yeah, the motion dies. Let's go ahead and take a five-minute break and we'll come back to our regular meeting. Uh, Commissioner Depau? You anywhere within earshot? Outside talking to Keith. All right, I'm going to go ahead and call the regular meeting to order, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a roll call.
Commissioner Desportis?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Fay?
Here.
Commissioner Blazer? Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Commissioner Bianchi?
Here.
Vice Chairman Munt?
Here.
Chairman Simon?
Here.
All right, um, that, um, I'll put my glasses on, because I cannot see. Trying to fight the age thing. It's not working very well. Um, at this time, members of the public make me, uh, comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the town. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Thank you very much, Vice Chair.
Yeah. For the agenda, I, I would, uh, like to make a motion prior to approval to move, uh, Item Number Eight FM 2101 Avantara Separation Fence into the consent agenda.
Uh, we have a motion to, um, move Item Eight to the consent by, uh, Vice Chair Munt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, second by Commissioner Bianchi. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? All right, with that, we've moved that. Um, now I just need a, uh, motion to approve the agendas.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Right, Vice Chair, motion to approve the agenda. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Fay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Now, with that, we'll move into Communications. Um, communications from citizens at this time, members of the public make comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the town, but not on the agenda. The commission, uh, response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter come, uh, commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. At this time, are there any communications from citizens? All right, not seeing any. We'll move on to a report from Council Liaison. Uh, Councilman September.
Is it working? There we go. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. Um, not a lot on, uh, on the update list tonight, but I do want to let everybody know that on Wednesday, November tenth, there will be a Veterans Day Ceremony at the Gilbert Regional Park at 5:30. Um, this is our second year doing it at the park. Last year was the first year, but it was COVID. It was a little wonky, so, um, this year it's, it's going to be a little bit bigger. Uh, the keynote speaker is Corporal Matthew Bradford of the United States Marine Corps, who was injured. Uh, he stepped on an IED while serving, and, uh, he'll be the speaker that evening. And then there's going to have, there's going to be food trucks and beverages before and then after the event. It should be, uh, it should be a pretty neat event to get out. The weather's beautiful. Perfect timing year for, uh, for being out and honoring our veterans. And then, uh, the Gilbert Days Parade, which was also, um, canceled last year, uh, will be held this year on Saturday, November twentieth. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Councilman. Okay, um, with that, we'll move into the public hearing consent items. All items listed below are considered the public hearing consent calendar. The commission may, by a single motion, approve any number of the items where, after opening the public hearing, no person requests the item be removed from the consent calendar. If such a request is made, the commission shall then withdraw the item from the public hearing consent calendar for purposes of public discussion and separate action. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent calendar and approved under a single motion. Do I have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
Yes, Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, including Item Number Seven DR 21-122 Melrose Medical and Item Number Eight FM 21-01 Avantara Separation Fence.
Hearing a motion from Vice Chair Munt. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Chairman Fay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes. We move on to non-consent items. Uh, non-consent public hearing items will be heard at an individual public hearing and will be acted upon by the commission by a separate motion. During the public hearings, anyone wishing to comment in separate, uh, excuse me, in support of or in opposition to the public hearing, item may do so. If you wish to comment on a public hearing item, you must fill out a public comment form indicating the item number on which you wish to be heard. Once the hearing is closed, there will be no further public comment unless requested by a member of the commission. And we will go to Item Number Eight FM 2101 Avantara. I'm sorry. Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. Item Number Nine. I see, I'm just all over the place tonight. All right, Item Number Nine DR 2158 Avantara. Keith, you're up, and I'll stop talking.
Chair Simon, members of the commission, good evening. So for this, uh, Avantara project, I can either give you a whole presentation. I know, um, maybe one of the commissioners has a question. I can give you a full presentation or just answer questions. It's up to you guys, whatever you want me to do.
Commissioner Fay, you had a poll? What, you have?
Well, I'm fine, I'm fine just going straight into this if you don't mind. Um, so I, I had concerns when this first came forward. Previously, um, when I first saw this thing a while back, and it was just that it's so much packed into it. And then, um, as I was looking at it tonight, today, well, yesterday, and then today during the day, um, there's open space required forty-five percent. Open space proposed forty-eight point nine. Let's just call it fifty percent. And there isn't really a good detailed breakdown, uh, in, in the notes or anything about the calculations or a, a, an embedded chart. But as I was looking at it, I could not even get my head close to around the finding fifty percent open space on, on this, unless you're counting the parking, which I, I know we can't do. And then I started getting into the narrative, and the narrative, the developer's narrative specifically includes open space that's in private yards, which we, we have voted against, and I think we, we probably still should. So then, as we were going back and forth about it, I, and we, we started to get into kind of some of the details, and, um, some of the details are inconsistent in the, the submittal, not, not in, you know, your, your details there. So I wanted to get a, I guess the biggest piece is, do we actually have forty-eight point nine percent open space, not counting parking and not counting enclosed private yards or that kind of stuff?
Chair Simon, um, Commissioner Fay. Appreciate the question. Um, so as far as the open space is concerned, um, I will address the narrative, uh, first, how there's some inconsistencies in the narrative versus the staff report. The narrative that is located in your packet is actually the narrative from the first submittal. And at the first submittal, um, I, I didn't ma, I don't make comments, I didn't make comments on the narrative. So, um, we didn't get a revised narrative as the project moved forward in the reviews. So that's the narrative from the first submittal. And at the first submittal, the project narrative, they were proposing to count the private yard spaces as part of the common open space calculation. But staff made a comment on that, and as you can see on the, I don't know if you can see it on the screen, but it does say forty-eight point nine percent open space. So as we move forward through the review process, we did not allow them to count the private yard space towards their open space requirement. So forty-eight point nine percent is actually, um, you are correct. That is not a correct number, and the staff report does say forty-eight point nine percent. So I'd like to correct that. The total amount of common open space that is provided on the site is forty-five percent. So that number in your staff report should say forty-five percent. The reason it says forty-eight point nine percent is because they were adding together the common open space and the private open space calcu, areas within the private enclosed yards behind the units. So if you add all of that together, it would be forty-eight point nine, point nine percent. But to meet the code standard, it's forty-five percent, and we do not count the private yard space. So they have forty-five percent open space. I know that you have stated that it doesn't appear that that is the case, but it is forty-five percent. I have confirmed that with the applicant. After our conversation earlier today, I confirmed that with the applicant. And, and Mr. Davis can expound more on that if you'd like him to. But I just wanted to state that, that they do have forty-five percent open space within the project. I hope that answers your question and provides a little bit of clarity as to why there's some inconsistencies. And actually, on the landscape plan, there is some, some weird things on the landscape plan, how things are labeled. There's not, the break, breakdown isn't as clear as it could be. So I'm actually going to, uh, try and get that corrected to show the correct percentages on the landscape plan after this meeting. I'll have it corrected to forty-five percent, so that it's clear and that there's no inconsistencies or confusion.
It, that helps, but it begs another question, because on their original, they did put in forty-eight point nine percent, which was including the, the open space that's enclosed or in, in the private yards, which by, and one of the numbers they did give is that amount is seven percent. If you take that piece out, they're not down at forty-five percent. They're down at forty-one percent.
Okay.
So unless they dropped a unit or two, which my experience as developers are, and I understand why, very hesitant to, to drop a marketable unit. That's the product they're selling. Somehow they must, they didn't count the seven percent. Somehow they must have found another three percent to squeeze back up to forty-five, the minimum, which I, I don't see any changes. So, but, and I get, anyone can squeeze a percent or two out if you count a few islands in the parking lot. You might, but I think they're already counting every square inch in Anhill, um, to, to get to the percent that they need already. So it's, it still strikes me as a, I, I would have appreciated them including a little bit more of a detailed breakout of where the open space is, how many square feet here, how many square feet in the islands, how many to get us to that number. But, um, in, in its absence, it, it, it begs more questions to me than, it, it's, most of the questions are resolved. I, I see what you're saying, and, and had we gotten right there with your, you would have resolved the ambiguity, other than the fact I already know that the backyards are seven percent, which twisted again a little bit. It, it, I, I I want the people here, particularly in the eve of City Hall, to have at least the minimum open space when they, when they pack into these things, okay?
Sure. Thank you for that. Uh, Chair, Chair Simon, Commissioner Fay, thank you. We, we appreciate that. I don't know if, if the applicant can shed a little bit more light on the inconsistencies between the numbers and, and, and tell a, uh, and maybe explain it a little bit.
Sure. Uh, Greg Davis with Eye Plan Consulting, uh, here on behalf of Continental Properties. And so, uh, the, what has changed is that the rear yards shrunk. So we were providing over three hundred square feet per rear yard, but when we couldn't count that towards the overall open space, they just had to reduce in size. So it went from seven percent down to three point four percent. So we do have forty-five percent. We are meeting the code requirement. Um, and then the extra three point nine percent, I think is the final number, is the private yard space. So.
Okay, any other questions? Commissioner Jones?
Keith, can you speak to, uh, maybe just on the building separation from twenty to ten? Again, I guess how kind of staff thinks about that. I know this particular product maybe might be part of the reason, but I'm just kind of curious how, how that works for staff.
Chair Simon, um, Commissioner Jones. I don't know if you, if, if you're aware, but council, Town Council approved last night the rezone in the general plan amendment. They did approve that building separation from ten, from twenty down to ten, ten feet. Um, I don't know if Mr. Davis wants to try and answer the rest of that, that question as to what the, the rationale was or the reason behind that, that, um, building separation reduction. that building separation reduction.
Sure, Chairman and Commissioner Jones, so, correct, when we looked, when we looked at this unit, this type of product, the twenty-foot separation is really a blanket across all multifamily, irrespective of the type. You know, for when you have three-story big buildings, it's really a necessity. When we're talking about two-story units that really reflect, look and live like a house, then we try to match the setback that would be provided in a single-family neighborhood, which is ten feet. It just helps us arrive at a density that we can make the project work, otherwise, we're either gonna have, you know, all, one type of multifamily, or we can have a variety, and that's one of the things that we felt was appropriate to ask for.
Alright, any other questions? Commissioner Bianchi?
Thank you, Chair, and I appreciate Commissioner Faye's question, because I had the exact same question on how that math worked. And the other question was, if that percentage of open space, if that was covered under their zoning approval last night, or if that's something we would address through DR? It seems like a kind of a moot point at this right now, but. Yeah.
Do you want me to answer that?
If you don't mind.
Chair Simon, Commissioner Bianchi, it's covered underneath the DR
Okay.
approval. Through the rezone, it was stated, I believe it was stated that it's, they met their minimum forty-five percent. So, we've addressed that through this DR approval, as far as finalizing what that percentage is.
And my next question might be better for the applicant, I'm just curious, what was the rationale that you used for the selection of the elevation style map and the the four different types you used and what you were putting where?
Commissioner Bianchi, it was really a result of working with staff to provide a variety of the different styles, and if staff felt that one style was too close to another, like a ranch and a craftsman, then they'd want maybe a little more separation. And so, that was our architect's, you know, kind of best attempt at trying to provide the diversity throughout the community. And our goal is simply that, you know, we want to make sure that we're having four different elevations. We only have ninety-some units to put them on in that, the single-family configuration, so we wanted to separate them, so as you go down the street, you get a little more variety. And to answer your question about the open space, it wasn't a request, it wasn't a deviation, because the code requires forty-five percent. And so, I don't think, it came up during the council presentation, yep, correct.
Thank you.
Chair Simon, real quick, if I could? If it makes you feel more comfortable about the open space percentage, and that it, so that it doesn't dip below forty-five percent, which it's not going to, you could always put a stipulation in the staff report for this, for this DR case, that it that it be, obviously meet the minimum forty-five percent, and that it not fall below that on the site, and that, and also that the landscape plan be cleaned up by staff. So, if that makes you more comfortable, you could add some stipulations to the approval for that, if that makes you feel more comfortable. Just wanted to bring that up as a suggestion.
Okay.
No, I mean, that's what the approval is, that's where, you don't need a stipulation to say meet code, if you're saying, that just seems weird. If, if there's gonna be any other exhibits, I would request that the applicant does an open space plan and actually proves that they're meeting the open, so essentially, take the site plan, start coloring in the areas that you're counting towards this open space, and list what the area, that area, what that is. I mean, I do it on all my projects, too, and that would, I think that would rest assure everybody that, yes, there is forty-five percent on here, because, you know, on their site plan, they're saying forty-five point zero percent. I mean, you're saying, you're telling me you're exactly right at forty-five percent. And looking at the site plan, I mean, those side yards and private yards, I mean, they're good size and they add up. And there's a lot of hard surface as well. So, I think I agree with you, Commissioner Faye. I mean, I'm not convinced that they're meeting that forty-five percent, just from my experiences in site planning.
Alright, any other comments? Questions for Keith? No?
Keith, I wasn't like cuckooing your, I wasn't spitting on your suggestion, I just think it's unnecessary. That's, I don't think, if I want to feel strongly, I might be against it.
No problem.
Alright.
Chairman?
Yes?
You could always do a stipulation that the applicant provide an open space plan illustrating the forty-five percent common open space to be approved by staff.
Okay. Would you like to request that? Okay, I'd like to go ahead and request the open space plot to provide to staff to make sure that we're within compliance of that forty-five percent or more. Alright, with that, are there any other questions, comments for staff or the applicant? Bring it up to the dice, and I'll entertain a motion or further conversation. Anybody want to take a shot at a motion?
Did you turn your mic, you're gonna do it?
Sure. Alright. I turned my mic on and you were leaning forward. Yes, Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve item nine, DR 21-59 Aventara, to approve the site plan landscaping, et cetera, et cetera, to prove it as written with the stipulation that the applicant submit a open space plan to be reviewed and approved by staff.
Alright, and that's DR 21-58?
Yes, I'm sorry if I mispronounced or.
We have a first by Commissioner Faye, do I have a second? Or a motion, I should say. We have a second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unopposed? Alright, passes, motion passes. Thank you. Alright, with that, we will move on to item number ten, UP 21-30 Lycycle Conditional Use Permit, and we've got Josh.
Just want to make sure this works. Good evening, Chairman Commissioners. UP 21-30, Lycycle is a request to approve a conditional use permit. Unfortunately, I don't have very many exciting exhibits to look at in this, so there is a lot of tech, so I appreciate if you bear with me. The request tonight is for the, a conditional use permit for a facility specializing in recycling recycling of lithium ion batteries, typically currently used in electric vehicles. As the commission might be aware, materials present in these types of batteries and also used in the recycling process are considered hazardous. And as such, our town zoning administrator determined that CUP would be required for this proposed facility to ensure that proper procedures and systems are in place to mitigate any potential negative impacts a facility like this might have on, on the surrounding area. Thank you. Lycycle is proposing to locate this recycling facility within the Gilbert Gateway Commerce Park. It's a small but growing industrial area located just west of Power Road and north of the 202. The Commerce Park neighbors the American Furniture Warehouse, directly to its east, residential community to its west. And then, there are also some other industrial buildings currently under construction in those vacant properties that you see to the north. Located on building two of this Commerce Park, as noted on the vicinity map, is where Lycycle is proposing to locate its one hundred and thirty-nine thousand square foot facility, on which they will be taking the entire space to operate in. While the applicant is here tonight, and he'll be able to give the commission much more in-depth and comprehensive overview of what their process is and what they do. Essentially, what Lycycle does is the intake, these lithium ion batteries that are no longer deemed appropriate for use in a car. They break those batteries down through an underwater mechanical process, separates it into three other intermediary products, which they then ship across the country to their main hub facility in New York. It's outside Rochester for further processing into other materials that are then able to be reused and creating new lithium batteries. So, that is a very simplified version of what they do. For the benefit of everyone here, four findings must be found in order for a conditional use permit to be approved. One is that the proposed use will not be detrimental to the surrounding area. It must conform to the town's vision set forth in our general plan, also our zoning code and any other applicable laws, and it may not interfere with the use and enjoyment of nearby properties. So, that is the criteria on which a use permit is basically approved or denied. In the review of the conditional use permit, we identified potential areas in which the proposed use, this recycling facility, could potentially impact surrounding residents. I have them listed on the screen right now. Number one, the hazardous materials present on site. Now, the town required the applicant to submit a hazardous materials report, which is included in your, in your report, detailing the types of materials present, the quantities of these materials being stored on site, where they'll be located, and what types of emergency management systems they have in place. In close coordination with our fire department, we've been able to determine that as proposed procedures for the use and storage of these materials all meet town standards. Second was the wastewater discharge potential into our water system and also the surrounding groundwater. It was also initial concern among staff, and then, in the first neighborhood meeting, one of the residents in the neighborhood to the west identified that as a concern that they primarily use a well-based system to obtain water, and they were concerned that toxic materials might seep into it, you know, poison the groundwater. To mitigate, to mitigate the potential for that to happen, the applicant will, number one, be internally recycling, reusing the water solution that they use in the recycling process, which also has two benefits as part of this internal recycling, is, number one, it kind of goes to what we heard about today earlier with the water report, is that it reduces the need for water from our, from our own reservoirs to operate this facility. Heather actually did review this report, and she determined that it does fall within the parameters of what we're looking for, for a facility like this. Also, Lycycle is proposing not to install a drain system within the recycling area so as to mitigate the potential for any, you know, spilled toxic water, or this recycling solution to accidentally fall into the drains, also get into our system that way. So, there'll be no internal drainage for that. They've also obtained a no discharge certificate with the Arizona Department of Economic Quality, EDEQ, which is also attached in your report. It allows EDEQ to monitor and verify that this facility is not releasing any unpermitted discharge, and it also gives them enforcement ability as well. Lastly, the water-based recycling process was specifically developed by Lycycle so that noxious fumes created by the process are contained within the water and not released into the air. Applicant has received a non-Titel V air emissions permit from the county, which is also attached in your report, verifying that the emissions from the facility may not exceed the county standards. Now, our town's Department of Environmental Compliance has reviewed both the air and water permits and has determined that the applicant's in compliance with our town's environmental standards. So, just in conclusion with condition one, with those three primarily, those three areas that we primarily looked at for potential concern, we believe that the applicant has proposed is mitigating those concerns, and staff believes that the proposed facility meets condition one. Condition two is that the proposed use, the recycling facility, conforms to the intent policies of the general plan. In addition to the policies listed in your report detailing how we feel that the proposed facility is in line with the specific visions within our town, the facility is also located within the power corridor growth area, which I have on the, on screen right now. This growth corridor is specifically designated by our general plan to be a special area within Gilbert where industrial and business park employment development is the primary economic focus due to its proximity to Mesa Gateway Airport and in the Loop 202. Therefore, staff has determined that Lycycle is also in compliance and meets condition two. With the conditions listed as in the report, as well as the attached county and state environmental permits, staff also finds that Lycycle meets the town zoning code and any other applicable state, local, or federal requirements. Regarding the final condition, condition four, that Lycycle may not unreasonably interfere with the surrounding, the enjoyment and use of surrounding nearby properties, staff finds that it does meet this condition as well. We analyzed the three potential ways mentioned earlier, earlier, excuse me, that the proposed facility could impact the area, determine that the processes and procedures in place, appropriately mitigate any potential negative external impacts this facility might have on the surrounding area. Now, also keep in mind that this facility is also subject to all other town nuisance laws and ordinances as well. For example, noise, odor, so on and so forth. Excuse me, one second. Lastly, in terms of neighborhood input, we held two neighborhood meetings for this proposal. First in July met our typical neighborhood standards, notify neighbors within three hundred feet, and also HOAs within a thousand feet. We had a few residents attend. One of those residents was the resident who raised the excellent concern about, you know, town water being polluted by, by potential discharge from this facility. We also held a second neighborhood meeting in August. We expanded the neighborhood notice area just to inform a wider swath of not only residences but businesses. Essentially, we almost did a quarter-mile notice area for this. At that second neighborhood meeting, about three neighbors attended. One of our neighbors did bring up the concerns just about the use of hazardous materials and concerns with having them at this facility in such close proximity to residential. They were discussed, as I discussed in our report, but they were also they were also included in the report and addressed by the applicant at that meeting. Now, I also do believe that resident from the second meeting is here tonight to speak as well. But that was the neighborhood input that we had for this proposal. So, just in closing, staff finds that the proposed facility does meet all four findings, and we recommend approval of UP 21-30, subject, of course, to the conditions lifted, listed in my staff report, which essentially ensure that all the appropriate permits required by state and county environmental departments are maintained, and if any of those issue or any of the, anything changes on it, if there's any change in the materials present on site, if there's any change, increase to the air emissions or the water discharge, which is at zero right now, if there's any changes, this conditional use permit would have to be seen again, reviewed by staff, and then brought back before the commission for approval again. So, with that, I appreciate you sticking with me, I know this isn't the most exciting subject, but this is, it's a needed facility, recycling of these, these batteries. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. The applicant's also here with a presentation to give you a little more in-depth understanding of their process as well.
Alright.
Thank you.
Anybody have questions for Josh, or do we want to go to the applicant for their presentation first, or, yeah, Commissioner Bianchi?
So, thank you, Chairman. So, Josh, I guess it is, it is exciting, because it's an evolving technology, and we're gonna have to face how we reuse these, so. With this type of use, is this typically conducted in a heavier zoned industrial area? Or do we control that based on the amount of hazardous materials they're proposing to have on site?
Chairman, Commissioner Bianchi, this is allowed in the light industrial area, however, our code does give us that ability, well, it gives our zoning administrator the ability to require this conditional use permit if hazardous materials are present, and if she determines that it's necessary, which we did in this case.
Okay, and I think you did touch upon it at the end, so when we talked about this being an initial stage recycling facility, if there were to be a later-stage recycling facility or an expansion that could be requested here, would that use permit have to come back for our consideration? Or could they do that on site?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, Josh, one question is just, I assume that we don't have any experience in the town of having dealt with this before, just wanted to confirm this is totally new to us.
Commissioner Jones, you are correct, this is, this was quite a learning curve for myself, and then, also, like I mentioned, we included our environmental compliance department, which I'm ashamed to admit that I didn't know we had an environmental compliance department. So, I met them, and they're really great people, and then also, we worked with our, our fire department to review the hazardous materials and stuff. It was a, it was a steep learning curve, but yes, this is the first of its kind that I know of.
Alright, any other questions for Josh? All right, any other questions for Josh at this time? All right, go ahead and see if the applicant wants to come and give us a presentation.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, for your record, the name is Rod Jarvis, address 3101 North Central Avenue. And I'm delighted I got here in time. I was at a board of adjustment hearing in Mesa that went a little bit long, so I'm glad the timing worked out. You're going to hear some more technical detail from Mr. Andrew Wong of Li-Cycle, but in layman's terms, because I'm not an engineer, let me just say in introduction that this particular use is the greenest of the green. What I mean by that is, first of all, it's a facility that is going to recycle batteries. And the demand for recycling batteries, as we all know, is only going to get greater and greater. The next Ford F-150 I buy is going to be a Ford Lightning. And there's a whole lot of people that are going to be switching over to all-electric vehicles. That's only going to increase the demand. So you you have this demand, but you don't want to take these batteries and put them in a landfill. You want to recycle them. So this facility is is going to provide that green service. But in addition to providing that green service, it's going to do it in a mega-green way. And and Mr. Wong will be able to to describe it a little better than I do. But what I mean by that is, it it recycles the batteries without without application of heat or noxious chemicals. It does it in a very green manner, not creating any emissions that are regulated at any level because they're so low. And it uses every bit of those batteries again. So it doesn't create battery waste. That's why I mean, green on green on green. It's for that reason, frankly, that this use was courted. This was wooed by the town of Gilbert. There was another municipality in this valley, Goodyear, that was vying for this use. Gilbert won the beauty contest. I think that will be very good, not only in creation of jobs, but putting Gilbert on the forefront of this green use. Puts a feather in the cap environmentally for the town of Gilbert. With that, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Wong, and he'll introduce his companion. Also, these gentlemen will be able to talk much more intelligent than I can about the process itself. And we have a presentation for you to look at. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Rod. You know, before we begin today's presentation, we'd like to give our thanks for the town of Gilbert for inviting us to this public hearing today and also the planning commission for overseeing this conditional use process permit for us as well. I'd like to introduce my companion here. His name is Christopher Moon. He's based out of Rochester, New York. He is our current production manager at our Rochester facility. He will be relocating to the East Valley area to oversee our Arizona-based operations, which will be based out of Gilbert and Mesa. I'm Andrew Wong. I'm a process engineer by trade. I'm currently the project manager for our Arizona-based operations at this time. So before we begin, I'd like to provide a high-level overview of lithium-ion batteries, what they are, and exactly why Li-Cycle has chosen to work with this, within this industry space. So lithium-ion batteries, like any other type of battery, is a source of electrical power. The only difference is that it utilizes lithium ions to really drive some of the electrochemistry, which provides the source of electrical power. Now, from our experience, we've seen these batteries come in three different form factors. The first being a cell, which is a battery that you might find in your cellphone or your laptop or a household industrial tool. A next being a module, which is a container that contains hundreds or thousands of these cells. So an example of such an application would be an energy storage system for which a house has a solar panel attached to it. And the last being a full pack. This is commonly found in electrical vehicles today, and its applications are only growing by the day. So how exactly does Li-Cycle play into this? Well, lithium-ion batteries require critical materials, including cobalt, nickel, and lithium, in order to manufacture them. And as the world transitions from fossil fuels to electrification, the growing demand for critical materials keeps on soaring. And that's exactly where Li-Cycle comes in. We've developed a Panta technology known as our spoken hub technologies, which allow us to recover more than 95% of all materials found within lithium-ion batteries. And we do this through something known as a spoken hub model. So we work with our various consolidators, aggregators, and customers throughout the North American market space and send these batteries to our regional locations, which we call our spoke facilities. These regional spoke facilities will consist of two site locations, one being a warehouse, which will hold our lithium-ion batteries, and the second being a processing facility, where the lithium-ion batteries are effectively broken down into three intermediate products through a water-based process. Now, for our Gilbert-based operations, we will be installing and constructing our processing facility. So to dive a little bit more into the actual process itself, it's a mechanical size reduction process. So what we effectively do is we take these lithium-ion batteries, process them in a water-based solution. This allows us to safely handle and discharge any of the residual energy that might be found within these batteries as we size reduce them into materials that we can ultimately send to either our off-take partners. So for example, we do produce a shred metal and shred plastics product. These will ultimately go down to our off-take partners for further resource recovery and something that's also an industry standard term known as black mass concentrate. So this black mass concentrate is one of the key intermediate products that we produce at our facility, which contains all the valuable constituents of the lithium-ion battery, including nickel, lithium, and cobalt. So from these regional facilities, we will then distribute and send the black mass concentrate to a centralized facility known as our hub, which will be based out of Rochester, New York. At this hub facility, the black mass concentrate is chemically refined into a high-grade purity end products that can be reintegrated into the lithium-ion battery manufacturing industry. And that really allows us to close the loop on the world's growing issues with spent lithium-ion batteries and avoiding these lithium-ion batteries from going into landfills. So just to talk about our existing operations, this isn't our first rodeo in the lithium-ion battery recycling space. We've actually got two existing facilities in operation right now, each with a capacity to process 5,000 tons of batteries per year. The first being our spoke one facility, which is based out of Kingston, Ontario, Canada, and the second being our Rochester-based operations, which is coined as our spoke two facility. So what does this mean about our Gilbert operations? Well, we've coined this facility as our spoke three facility or our Gilbert spoke. And as I mentioned earlier, we will be installing and constructing a processing facility within the Gilbert space, which will allow us to process lithium-ion batteries through our mechanical process. From a quick overview about our project specifications, we will be investing roughly $10 million into this project, not into only our equipment that we're installing into the facility, but also tenant improvements that we're planning on constructing within the building that we signed for a lease as well. In terms of job opportunities, we're planning on creating more than 40 jobs, which include supervisory, operations, and management staff. And right now, we're actually actively hiring for these positions as well. Project length, we are committed to staying Gilbert for a long period of time. We've executed a 10-year lease within the Gilbert Gateway Commerce Park, which will see us operate and construct out of building two out of that facility location. And our operations are, at this time, slated to start at the beginning of 2022 with the issuing of this conditional use permit. Now, just talking about more about the technical specifications of our facility as well, this facility will be capable of processing 10,000 tons of batteries per year. This will consist of two trains, each with a capacity of 5,000 tons per year. And from a technical specification point of view, our process is different from existing recycling technologies in the fact that it's sustainable. We have low carbon footprint relative to existing technologies, including smelting. It's low energy, doesn't use that much water. And the amount of emissions that we've been permitted for are effectively in the lowest threshold allowable in the Maricopa County Air Quality Department. Now, I'll pass it over to Christopher Moon here, who will provide a couple photos of our existing facility in Rochester, New York, and provide a description and an overview of the operations that we have throughout the facility.
Hi, guys. Thanks for having us today. So this is, this picture was taken just as soon as we started the facility in Rochester. So maybe it was a month old there. Then again, this position, you could, this photo, you could tell that we were not even commissioning yet. And this photo was taken about two months ago or maybe three months ago. But you could tell that the facility stays clean, clean as it was when you seen those prior photos. We constantly cleaning the floors with a scrubber and all that. Anything we pick up off the floor goes right back into the system. It dumps right back into the system and gets processed again. This is our P L C, which is, we have a proprietary, I want to say proprietary computer commissions on it. And so what we could do here, this is Darius. He's a local guy and want to say our first hire today. We got our first hire as a production manager. So he'll be doing my position when I do in Rochester. He'll be doing it in here. And he's actually, he could, he says he can walk out to end of a street and see the facility, which is nice in Gilbert. And Andrew, do you want to speak on the concerns of noise and?
Yeah, for sure.
Okay.
Yeah, so we felt that by introducing a lithium-ion battery recycling facility, we understand that there are a couple concerns when it comes to bringing such a novel type of technology and facility into an area where there's a residential neighborhood close by. And we felt that there were three main concerns that we wanted to tackle today and provide some context as to what we've done in order to mitigate and minimize these concerns as much as possible. So the first being noise. I'm actually not sure if this is the PowerPoint presentation, but we prepared two videos embedded showing the noise levels from our Rochester facility from the exterior of the building and also the interior of the building. So just for some context, our Rochester facility is also located next to a residential neighborhood. To date, we haven't had any complaints from any of the local residents concerning the operations that we've had in Rochester. If these videos were playing, you would actually hear that there is no audible noise coming from either the exterior or interior of the building at this time. It doesn't sound like there's any sound in the video, but we are more than happy to share these videos with those in attendance today just to demonstrate that there is no audible noise or any significant noise that would cause the process to be invasive to any of the local residents. The next two concerns that we had in mind were from a trucking or from a traffic and chemicals perspective. Really, we don't really see ourselves bringing too many trucks into our premises on a daily basis. We only anticipate roughly four to five trucks coming in and out of our facility just to bring material in and material out. From our previous operations in Kingston and in Rochester, our trucks typically only operate within normal business hours, and we would operate within any of the noise ordinance as proposed by the town of Gilbert. Now, the biggest question here is probably, you know, chemicals. We want to be transparent with the town of Gilbert as much as possible, and we do want to indicate that we do use chemicals in our process. But reiterating that, it's not a main factor in the actual size reduction of the batteries that we use as we process our batteries through our system. These chemicals, to mitigate any of the risks in the facility and into the surrounding areas, will be stored in single pallet quantities only. And we do utilize two main chemicals in the process, the one being, one being an acid and one being a base. These chemicals that we're using in our process are also commonly found in your big box stores. So these are things that you can actually take off, you know, from your local Home Depot and actually bring into your house. So these aren't, you know, any off-the-shelf items that you would need to specifically get. It's something that you can commonly find in stores and use at your own house. The last being a, ensuring that the facility has been confirmed to be operating within the limits of some of these chemicals that we're using within the facility. We have hired a local consultant just to complete a fire protection assessment to ensure that the facility complies with all the material handling requirements for the facility and the materials that we're looking to store. Now, just providing a little bit more context about our facility and environmental, environmental safety, we'd like to touch base on environmental sustainability. You know, as Rod mentioned earlier, this is a green tech process. We're effectively taking batteries, processing them into intermediate materials that can ultimately then be reused into lithium-ion battery manufacturing. Something that's important to understand is that our process does not produce any industrial wastewater discharge. As Josh mentioned earlier, any of the solutions that may be generated from our water-based process are effectively reused in the process and avoids having any water discharge into any industrial or any local sewer systems. Something else that's important to note is that we have minimal air emissions coming out of this facility as well. We have been permitted under a non-Title V permit under Maricopa County, which is effectively the lowest threshold available in terms of emissions permitting from a environmental perspective. Now, for fire protection, we've designed several fire suppression systems into our facility's design, including automatic water sprays, remiculite, and sensors. This will really mitigate and minimize the risks associated with handling lithium-ion batteries through the process, not only from the introduction of lithium-ion batteries into the facility, but also as we size reduce it through our system as well. The facility also has been installed with ESFR sprinklers, which are early suppression, fast-response sprinklers, which are typically common, commonly found in these warehouse, warehousing-type buildings within the East Valley area. And we've done a bit of research and research internally to understand that these fire sprinklers are more than capable to handle any of the lithium-ion batteries that we're handling onsite as well. Now, from a plans and policies perspective, we have developed several safety plans, emergency response plans, and are more than happy to provide those to the town of Gilbert for further review. But we have shared these with the local jurisdictions in our Kingston and Rochester-based facilities, and they have vetted for them. We've also conducted frequent inspections of our safety systems and plants just to ensure that our facility is operating to the highest standard as possible and ensuring that we've got detailed training programs implemented. Now, I'd like to pass it over back over to Rod, who will provide an overview of our site plan and a couple closing remarks.
Thank you, gentlemen. This slide that you're looking at illustrates that this facility is going into an existing project. This is not an unexpected use going into an area that's not wanted. This is going into a industrial park, business park kind of a setting already. Yes, we do have neighbors nearby. We noticed, sent out a very broad notice range. We had two neighborhood meetings. Did not have many in attendance at those meetings. We did have questions, which we answered with regard to whether there would be any water seepage into the water table, which there will not be. What air emissions there would be, which you heard is in the lowest possible category. There may still be some neighbors who want to ask those questions, want to make sure those questions are answered. But every regulating authority that has input on this has looked at it. This is passing all of those standards. The really, we, as a zoning firm, made what we thought was a very good case early on that no additional permitting process was required at all. We feel like the fact that we're here is an abundance of caution because this is a process that does not create any kind of a danger to its surrounding area. But because we're bringing in batteries, because, you know, there are some chemicals that are put into that water-based solution, staff felt like we needed to go through this process, and that's why we're here. But we think we've met every possible requirement for safety for the surrounding area, and we're happy to answer any questions you all may have.
All right, thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Jones?
I do. I have two quick questions. One would be, you mentioned 95% is recyclable. The other 5%, where does that end up? And the second question would be, you have two other facilities. I'm just curious to know if there've been any issues, any violations, any environmental problems? Just to get a sense of, and how long those have been operational would be also interesting to hear.
Thank you.
Yeah, so Commissioner Jones, I'm more than happy to answer your two questions, maybe starting with the second. Our Kingston operations came online in roughly May of 2020. We actually had piloting operations, you know, dating all the way back to 2018 in Kingston as well. So we really took that step to commercialize our operations starting in 2020 of May for our Kingston-based operations. For Rochester, we were operational by December of 2020 as well. So really, we were able to construct two facilities within the 2020 calendar year. So we've got a lot of experience on our belt in terms of understanding the detailed requirements from operating these lithium-ion battery recycling facilities. And what we do- And what we do is we impart a continual improvement process, understanding what needs to be improved upon from our existing two facilities and building onto it, you know, for our third facility here in Gilbert, Arizona. Now, for our, the question regarding the 95% recoverability of the materials that we, uh, currently recover from lithium ion batteries, that is really just a minimum benchmark that we've established from some of the test work, uh, that we've done from a lab scale. Um, the five, you know, other 5% of the components may be items that, um, are phased out through, uh, some of the recycling of the solution that we do internally. And some of the other materials may be actually scrubbed through some of the pollution control devices that we have onsite as well. But that 95% really, um, concerns most of the valuable constituents that are found with the lithium ion batteries and any of the other components that you find, uh, surrounding the casing, uh, some of the foils, et cetera, for these batteries as well.
And so that 5% does not end up into our valley landfills?
Correct. So the three intermediate products that we produce from our facility include a black mass concentrate, as I mentioned earlier, contains the valuable constituents. Um, the second being a plastics, which is typically the internals of a battery plus any casing that you see associated with it. That goes directly to one of our offtake partners, uh, for it to be transformed into crude oil and into other chemical products. And lastly, the last product that we have is a shred metals product, uh, that goes back to one of our companies in Canada for additional metals recovery. So really, we're not, um, directing any of the material that we're, um, that would be going into any potential landfills within the, uh, Phoenix area. The 95% really just relates to how much we can get back from the original battery that we're recycling through our process.
Okay. And then, uh, just to confirm on that second question I'd asked, I realize those two other facilities have not been operational very long, but have there been any issues to date? Environmental violations, anything like that, that we should know about?
Yeah, so for the two existing facilities that we have onsite, we've had no major incidences concerning any of our operations and to my knowledge, uh, no environmental, uh, concerns from those facilities as well.
Other questions?
Yeah, Commissioner Bianchi.
So I appreciate Commissioner Jones' question. I've got a couple more kind of similar to that, because as we're trying to do, we're trying to ensure that this is appropriately cited. So with the Kingston and the Rochester facilities, are they located in light industrial areas like this or are they in more, housed in more industrial areas?
So speaking about the Kingston operations right now, Commissioner Bianchi, uh, that it's actually located right to next to a residential area as well. Uh, most of our facilities have been placed in a light industrial type area, so very similar to what, you know, we see right now here in Gilbert, Arizona. Our Rochester-based operations are actually within the Kodak Eastman Business Park. So that is, you know, a little bit more heavy industrial relative to what we see here in Gilbert, Arizona. But speaking from our, um, operations in Kingston, we haven't really seen any issues and that land zoning designation is really appropriate for what we deem as a manufacturing process.
Okay, thanks. And my last question is kind of along the lines for, for the waste. So if the facility is water negative and doesn't discharge the wastewater, um, but the recycling process is water-based, um, and if there's no air emissions, how do you dispose of any of that wastewater generated or is through your process, is that constantly just reused?
Yeah, so to answer your question, yes, the solutions that we generate at the end of our process are effectively continuously reused. Um, some of the solution does leave through our end products, which then are taken care of by our, um, offtake customers that will process the items afterwards. Uh, but from a discharge perspective, yes, um, there isn't any industrial wastewater that is, you know, effectively bled into the local ecosystem.
And so those are shipped offsite as well?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions, questions for the applicant at this time?
Yes, please.
Yeah, Commissioner Faye?
Mr. Wong, this is essentially a high tolerance shredder, right?
Correct, yes.
And, um, you've already applied for hazardous waste permits from DEQ, I assume RECA or something like that. You've already applied for the air permits, to the extent you even need it, from Maricopa County. You've already applied for the hazardous wastewater permits, also probably from DEQ to the extent you need it. So to me, it seems like the only, the only issue is really we should be, I, I have obviously done a fair amount of shredder work, although not underwater self-contained, super duper shredders. I've dealt with the old fashioned throw metal and noise and smoke everywhere kind of shredders. It seems like what we should be concerned about here is noise and smell. And it sounds like you're essentially saying, there's none. Um, underwater makes sense that there would be no smell. It's kind of the primary reason I think you would do the underwater. My biggest concern would be the noise for the neighbors. And your essential position is that there's basically none.
Yeah, we understand that, you know, the process itself is very mechanical based. There's a lot of moving parts. Um, you would expect there to be a lot of noise, but from our experience, um, you know, operating these facilities in Kingston and in Rochester, given their locations located right next to residential neighborhoods, we to date have not had any complaints concerning noise. And we're more than happy to provide a couple of noise reports that we've done internally in the building, which would show that, you know, we're limiting it to, um, levels that are acceptable from OSHA standards.
And, I mean, you're still going to be su- subject to city noise ordinances and it doesn't seem like you're at all concerned about.
No, from our perspective, you know, just given that we have had, uh, we haven't had any complaints to date, um, we wouldn't expect any issues with noise from.
And basically running a shredder underwater, I, I would hope, I mean, the old fashioned shredders, yeah, they're a noise nightmare, but underwater, I wouldn't expect that you'd be all that concerned about the noise.
Right, I, I would agree with that. You know, the shredders that we're currently operating are not high capacity, high RPM shredders. They process the batteries in a very slow manner, so there's not a lot of, you know, mechanical components that are moving at a very fast motion, which would lead to the amount of noise that you would think that would come from a mechanical process such as ours.
I, I'm surprised that there's no wastewater at all. I, I don't actually care, um, if you have some wastewater, my assumption is you're handling it in a permitted manner that DEQ is fine with, either through the sanitary system or having it hauled off or drummed or whatever. And if, as long as you're permitted for it, I, um, but the, the idea that there's none, all right, somebody's dealing with it, but as long as you're dealing with it, okay, I don't actually care. And I assume that that's what staff is, is just checking to make sure you've got all the right permits beyond that. Um, and if the noise isn't really a concern, I'm, I'm, I think it's one, in fact, actually I'm a, a fan.
Thank you.
Well, not a fan, but a fan of getting it here. It's got to go somewhere. I, I'd just as soon have it here.
All right. Any other, uh, questions for the applicant at this time? All right, thank you very much. Um, at this time, we're going to go ahead and open it up to, um, we've got one, uh, community member that would like to speak. We've got Alan Quist. Alan, come on over. You've got three minutes, go ahead and state your name and, uh, your place of residence and.
Uh, I further, uh, would commend then on the timing of this, this project and the rollout of it, because as there's more and more electric vehicles, heaven knows that we're going to need, um, recycling facilities to, to deal with the, the batteries, uh, from those vehicles. Uh, what I cannot commend them on, however, is the particular site that they have chosen for this use, members of the commission and Mr. Chairman. Um, the reason being is that this site is surrounded by an ocean of homes, apartments and schools. Um, I had a graphic that I sent to Josh, but this graphic will suffice as well. You can see to the immediate west, houses, to the northwest, houses, there's more developments coming in, to the southwest, houses. Tonight, you are here to decide upon a conditional use permit involving highly toxic materials or chemicals, uh, highly combustible or explosive materials or other materials and substances of a noxious nature. While I'm not a zoning expert, I would respectfully submit to the commission that these uses do not belong in such terribly close proximity to where a large number, number of people live, go to school. And, um, I know there's some technical findings that are involved this evening in your decision. Um, I've worked extensively or communicated quite a bit with Josh Rogers here and I, I commend him and the work that he's done. He's very professional, very, uh, good to communicate and work with. But just as I, as I went over some of these findings, I would respectfully want to present just a couple of counterpoints to the commission that the commission might consider, uh, as you look at those findings that you're required to make. Uh, the first finding was, that was mentioned is that the proposed use will not be detrimental to health, safety or general wel- welfare of persons living or working in the vicinity to adjacent property, to the neighborhood or the public in general. And respectfully, as to that point, I would, uh, raise the point that, that little is known about this new process and a lot of faith is be- being put into life cycle and the assertions of their, their expert, uh, that prepared a report. Uh, the town did not, uh, enlist the aid of an independent expert. Uh, it, it did the, the review internally, which I, I respect that. Um, I had requested that they reach out to, uh, their own expert to perform a review, but that wasn't done. Um, and given the proximity to houses here, there really is no margin for error in this case. And as was, there were some questions made by Commissioner Jones about these other facilities, the Rochester, uh, facility, the facility in Canada. Uh, those facilities have been in operation for a year, uh, a little more perhaps. There just isn't the track record that you'd want to see for a use that is going to be in the heart of all of these houses. And I, I think inquiries should have been made to some of these residents. In fact, I was in the process of considering sending letters to some of the residents that live close to the Rochester facility to get their take on what it's like to live in the shadow of a, a life cycle facility. That was when I thought this process had to go to the, the town council after you guys heard it, but I, I subsequently learned that tonight, you guys are the decision makers on it. So, um, so that's us the finding one, just, uh, briefly, uh, Chairman, if you'll indulge me in a minute or two more, uh, I'll be brief, I, I promise.
Give you another minute there.
Okay. The second one is the proposed use conforms to the purposes, intent and policies of the general plan and its policies, uh, in the applicable area. Uh, and I know in Josh's report, he cited some of the, the different, uh, opportunities that are listed in the general plan. I would cite to opportunity goal number two, policy 58, which says to promote strategies that create a healthy community by improving air quality. And I would say that this is not in conformance with that. Uh, while it has less emissions than a smeltering battery plant, it still has emissions and it is still in terribly close proximity to a vast number of town residents. And the final point, uh, again, uh, I, I won't go into the, their technical requirements, but in, in conclusion, I will, I, I would urge the commission to, to reject this conditional use permit. Uh, in the alternative, uh, if the commission is inclined to, to proceed with it, I would request that stipulation A, uh, be modified somewhat. Currently, it reads, "Any changes to the type of hazardous material or the quantities of hazardous materials stored on site as described in the hazardous materials inventory sheet in attachment five shall require review and approval." I would just want that to be amended so that it reads, uh, in the second line there, "Materials stored on site, including but not limited to those described in the hazardous materials inventory sheet." Uh, and that, those materials that were identified were identified by their expert. And I believe this additional language would cast a wider net, should they decide to change their processes in the future, add additional chemicals or in any way modify it, that they would again have to come before the commission. Uh, but again, my, my first request would be to, to deny it, uh, or in the alternative, modify it, cast a wider net. We, we have to be able to monitor this and make sure that all those people that you're looking at in that map, uh, will be safe in the years to come. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, would the applicant like to come back up and give some response?
Uh, we support that suggested amendment. That makes good sense. Just real quickly, with, with regard to the general issue. Understand that, that we didn't talk about this, but life cycle brings in a lot of batteries from a lot of places. They don't store them here. They have a facility located in Mesa. So you won't have more than the, uh, more batteries there than are, that are going to be worked on in that day. With the express intent that this facility is kept safe for its environment, very few chemicals, enclosed kind of process, and only enough batteries be worked, worked on on, on that day, that's how they've set it up. So there isn't a danger here. If, if, think about how many gas stations are on corners or convenience stores with gas pumps and what might happen if, uh, the unexpected occurs, even though it's complied with every possible, uh, regulation. And that's a much, much greater risk than what we're talking about here. This is a very, very minimized risk, uh, if you could even call it that. So we submit that all of the regulatory agencies that are reviewing this, that will continue to monitor this, uh, make it a very safe neighbor, uh, for the homes nearby. And we support that suggested amendment to stipulation.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, are there any other questions for Josh, the applicant? All right, go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back up to the dice. Is there any conversation?
Did anybody happen to write down what that amended stipulation is?
Uh, Ava, do you have the? It's, it's actually, um, I think that we had, uh, in letter A, under the staff recommendations, any changes to the type of hazardous materials or the quantities of hazardous materials stored on site, um, as described but not limited to, or something along those lines? The hazardous materials inventory sheet.
Chairman, if I may?
You may.
Um, it is, it is increasing, uh, so changing to A, any changes to the type of hazardous material, sorry, let me make sure I speak into the mic for this one. Um, any changes to the type of hazardous material or the quantities of hazardous materials stored on site, including but not limited to those described in the hazardous materials inventory sheet in attachment five?
Okay. Any other discussion? If there's no discussion, I'll seek a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve, subject to the amendment that was discussed from the podium, uh, item 10, U- Uniform Papa 21 dash 30, life cycle conditional use permit.
All right, I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Have a second, uh, from Commissioner Bianchi? All those in favor? Aye. Uh, any opposed? All right, with that, the, uh, motion passes. Thank you. We'll move on to administrative items. Administrative items are for the commission, uh, discussion and action. It is the discretion of the majority of the commission regarding public input requests on any administrative item. Persons wishing to speak on administrative item should complete a public comment form indicating the item number on which you wish to, uh, address. Commission may, any, uh, may or may not accept public comment. Do we have any administrative items? No? All right. Moving on to number 11, acceptance of the Shade and Streetscape Master Plan. Is that Kyle? Oh.
Chairman, Commissioners, I'm going to be the standing Kyle for the moment. Um, so my name is Justin Nacevedo. Um, I'm a licensed landscape architect and a planner. I've, uh, been the project head and lead on the Shade and Streetscape Master Plan for the town of Gilbert. I know you have received the rather large packet, um, that, that is the entirety of the master plan, uh, currently as it stands today. There are 76 pages in the main document and then there are an additional somewhere around 630 additional pages, I believe, um, that are, that consist within the appendix. Um, the appendix mostly consists of individual reports for, uh, data that we gathered and collected through the process. So there's a lot of pages there. So I do apologize, but we wanted to make sure everything was included in case we ever need to go back and, uh, review some of this data. So with that, I'd like to open it up for any discussion, um, prior to acceptance.
Any discussions or questions?
I guess just a couple of quick questions. So we mentioned the length of the document.
Yes.
Do they have, I, I know you wanted us to do our due diligence and review at all. Is there an executive summary or something that the, that hits the highlights or the key takeaways for the public or how you're choosing to implement this?
So there is. So, um, I believe, let me just go ahead and open it up here. So there is. So I believe, let me just go ahead and open it up here. So there's a number of points within the document. We attempted to make this as graphic as possible, understanding the fact that really the document itself is actually not that long. It's 76 pages for a master plan. It's considered rather short, actually. It's the appendix that, that looked rather daunting as you pulled up that number. I'm sure many of you opened that and had a small panic attack. And I completely understand that. So if we were to go to jumping into the section on why this plan, which is page number 13, and on the bottom corner, it'll come as page number five, if you look at the PDF. There's a number of pages in here that really start to outline what our goals are in this plan, what we're starting to look at. Again, our goal is highly graphical in those, those 76 pages. So if you flip through there, even though it's 76 pages long, I would say there's probably over 50% of that dedicated to graphics and imagery. And the goal again is because this document was, was really created not only to be used as something that guides staff, but it'll also be something that guides future development as well as reaching out to residents. We've recognized that as a key part of this plan moving forward. Since such a large part of our community really is based on residential, we want to ensure that we have things that are accessible to the public and understanding why we might want to be adding trees. So if you go through, you're not going to see standard sections. You might see a master plans like this. You're going to see something that's much more graphic in nature. And really, we, we drafted this entire document to function really as a modular system. That way, we can see a snapshot of really our background, our intro and why we might function, or look at the functions that we're, we're trying to dive into in this plan is really our first chapter. Then our second chapter is diving into how we might begin to implement those factors, looking at what trees we should be using and how we actually place those, as well as shade structures, because they have their place as well with what we're looking at here. And then the final chapter really begins to dive into a summary of how we can actually begin to implement this out throughout the community. Looking at what are our processes for doing so, where are our funding coming from? And then what recommendations we might be having as far as starting to look at how we can actually increase the shade and a number of different use areas.
And I imagine this is the first plan of this type, or does it replace a similar report or similar guidance that might have been?
I think we're going to call this the first of its type. Yeah, this is the first one.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I'm curious to see how this leads to potentially landscape standards and updates and design review considerations as we move forward.
And that's the goal. Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Jones?
For what it's worth, I noticed schools are mentioned in here. I feel like we could really use a lot more trees in our schools. Our schools start to look like prisons sometimes, and they're too barren, and we need to have trees. These kids are outside and they need coverage. So for what it's worth, I put in a plug for trees at schools, please. Thank you.
Good, Commissioner. I appreciate you mentioning that. That was something that we have identified. We've been doing studies similar to this over the past four years in the valley. Schools tend to be very high on our priority list of things that should be looked at. They tend to operate a little bit outside the, what we'd call the typical law of the rest of the towns and cities that we're working in. And they tend to have the lowest shade coverage percentage of any developed facility in a town, which seems a little bit backwards. As I think we want to look at how we can shade those types of things. I'm not sure the exact page. I can try to pull that up quickly.
Well, when you say they operate a little bit outside, under the ARS, don't they operate completely outside? We don't get.
Yes, exactly. Yes. But what, what our goals are is to help to open those conversations. So we're also working. So part of this plan, we had a number of stakeholders that were involved in it as well. Not just working within our departments here at the town of Gilbert, but working with in particular a group called the Arizona Sustainability Alliance, which Gilbert already has a rather strong relationship with. As they've been moving towards helping to increase shade in all of our communities across the valley and really the entire state. We actually used certain portions of this document that we crafted here a couple of months ago to help them with part of their education for education. So they are, they have an active portion of their outreach that is focused specifically on working with school districts and teachers and why we need to increase this. So really, this plan's helping that conversation already, even through the process of moving through the draft. But our goal is to increase shade within school facilities.
Yeah, and thank you. I actually really appreciate this. As an environmental engineer, I think there's one thing we could use, it significantly amount more trees. And one issue that I've personally run into is a tree falling on my house and then my HOA not replacing it. And so I don't know, do, do we talk to within this report of, well, at every time we get a storm, there's about 4,000 of the palaver days laying in the street, and then the tree guys making more money than I do, grinding them up and laughing all the way to the bank. So, you know, I just want to understand as we're looking at that to make sure that the functionality of these types of trees and kind of it's not recycling, because once they're gone, they're gone, but that there should be some replacement. And because I for one would like to place trees back there, and I'm hamstrung to do so, because my HOA says, we don't want to have to pay for the water and the maintenance and all of this. And I don't know if that means that a board that we need to make more requirements, but just as a issue that I've run into is we make, when somebody does development, you have to have a landscaping plan. But then, once the HOA takes it over, then years down the road, a lot of those trees end up gone. And then it becomes, well, we can't afford it. We need to start taking trees out. And I, I just say I commend you guys on this, and I think it's very important. And for the heat island effect amongst other things, it's, it's something we really need to tackle as we grow here, so.
So Chairman and Commissioner, if I may. So that is definitely something we're looking at as part of this. And there's two key factors in how that's being addressed in this plan, particularly through recommendations. So Gilbert has been a Tree City USA, I believe it's for 23 years now. And we've been following with those, those guidelines, what it takes to be a Tree City USA, really well for the past 23 years. But there's a new set of guidelines that are coming up that we're recommending should be followed by the town of Gilbert. The key one being a maintenance care ordinance on trees, which essentially gives the town the ability to go in and say, you need to maintain these trees correctly, and you need to replace them if they, they do get lost in a storm. That being said, one of the things we also definitely looked at was which trees go in which places and why they should go there. One of the great examples, I think, is like the very, very last page of the appendix. There's a simple one-off sheet for streetscapes that is really just looking at where you should be putting trees, which trees you should be putting in, which ones are recommended. They are up for consideration off of our low-water use plant list that we have and the tree list we also provided. It is a set of guidelines moving forward, but hopefully it should make things a lot easier, and we're not just putting palaver days everywhere. And especially not over 25 feet in center. If we put them a little bit closer, they do a lot better. And don't put them in the middle of the road.
Right. Any other comments, questions?
I guess the only comment I have is, you know, from what we learned from our very first presentation, I feel pretty good knowing we have enough water to irrigate all these trees.
So my favorite response to that one. So there is a, a portion in here, Commissioner. Let's see exactly which page it's on. So one of the things we looked at was our, our shade coverage across the entire town. And while we're doing that, we went ahead and we documented a bunch of other things, because while we're at it, we should document everything we have. So one of the hundreds of pages of appendix dives into this at a really deep level. But we essentially, we completed, it's a, it's a randomized spot data analysis of the entire town with 20,000 plus points documented, looking at what is the percentage of grass versus trees versus just open bare land, non-developed buildings, streetscape, sidewalks, et cetera. And so on page 18 of the the PDF, which will be labeled page 10 down at the bottom of the page, we're looking at 13.85% coverage of grass. One of the things that we talked about extensively in the Parks and Recreation Board meeting here a week ago was the amount of underutilized grass throughout the town. Even just eliminating a portion of that grass really opens up the amount of water we now have for use on trees, just because of the sheer use and volume of water that goes into implementing grass, especially if we're doing both summer and winter. So 13.85% is just the amount of grass that is not under a tree already, essentially, because that's all we're able to look at when we're doing these randomized point database takeoffs. So even if we minimize that by half, we essentially have the water we would need to increase is what we're estimating to plant every tree out there we need. So as we're looking at facilities in the future, we talked a lot about parks and the fact that in reality, even in most park spaces, we have our utilized, which is active turf versus non-active turf. Most of our parks have a fairly small percentage of what we call active turf, so we're actually playing games on and are really able to be utilized versus some edge spaces where it, it really doesn't make sense to necessarily, you're getting it in the long term. So I'm hoping we get the water for it. I hope that answers your question. A comment.
Comment.
I had a rebuttal, so I apologize.
Well, I was, I was going to ask who went around town and counted the 17,082 trees, but.
We had quite a team out there doing it. It took three months of a lot of tree counting, and that is just a fraction of the amount of trees that actually exist in this town. There's something like 7.3 square miles of tree canopy coverage in Gilbert that exists today.
Well, living in the area that I do, I can tell you, grass does not grow under good canopy in the desert. Well, the winter does. The summer does not. Anyways, thank you very much. I, I really appreciate this. I think that you guys did a phenomenal job and appreciate it.
Thank you. And there's one thing, Chairman and Commissioners, that I have need to mention before Kyle comes up here and mentions it. There will be some, there is likely to be some minor modifications between now and council acceptance. We have a number of meetings between now and then. We have the council retreat where we're meeting with them on Monday this next week to go over this plan in a rather extensive manner, to make sure they're, they're completely on board before it comes to them in the following month. We're also meeting with the Parks and Rec Board again in another two weeks. And then we also have some minor staff changes that are happening throughout. So there's, I think, two spots in there that are missing two numbers. They still need to be filled in with some final numbers and, but I think we're right there, and it's, it's very minor modifications at this point. Was that the one you're aiming for? Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And, and just so I know, is this just administrative this evening? You don't need motion from us or any action?
Motion to accept.
So I'll open it up. If there's any, no further discussion, I would open for a motion to accept.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to accept the shade and streetscape master plan.
I'd have a motion.
Pending amendments.
Motion to approve from the vice chair. I have a second from Commissioner Jones. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Passes.
Chairman, Commissioners, thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, hope you all had the opportunity to read the minutes from the last mini-meeting, and I will entertain a motion.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the October 13th, 2021 meeting.
I'll second.
A motion to approve from the vice chair and a second from Commissioner Fay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Right. And that passes, and then we don't have anything, executive session that I'm aware of, correct? So we report from. Eva, did I miss you?
No, she's after us.
Oh, you're after us.
After you.
All right. Do, do anybody up here want to say anything before I push it off to Eva? All right. Eva, you're up.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Just one minor thing to report. Our land development code refresh is now in effect. It went into effect on October 21st. So again, wanted to thank everybody for their help in crafting that, and it is now in use. Thank you.
Awesome. All right. Well, thank you very much. Hope everybody has a wonderful Thanksgiving. With that, I'll close the meeting and we'll see you next month. Smack, smack.